Hello, good evening. I'm doing a gala this Saturday and the, oh, thank you. All right.
I would like to call this meeting to order. Today's date is Thursday, April 11th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the governing board of San Marcos Unified School District. Oh, I apologize. April 10th, Thursday. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of member Ahmad. Pardon me. San Marcos Unified School District Board of Education meeting is a business meeting of the board held in public. While we welcome and encourage public participation, the expected behavior is that this meeting will be conducted in an orderly fashion. Only the person recognized by the board vice president may speak. While that member of the public is speaking, members of the audience must not yell or speak out regardless of whether you agree or disagree. While public comment is in progress, if you speak out, you are out of order and will be asked to leave the meeting. As adults participating in a public meeting, we need to model civility in our children, to our children and students. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you in advance for helping conduct this meeting respectfully. Thank you. Mission statement: The San Marcos Unified School District is an innovative and collaborative community providing an unparalleled, paralleled educational experience through an engaging and supportive environment. All of our students are challenged, inspired, and poised to excel. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by member Carlson and seconded by member Mia. To approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The board met in closed session to discuss matters pertaining to public employee, employment, transfer, appointment, discipline dismissal, release, evaluation, reassignment, government code 54957. No action was taken. Before our student board rep makes their presentation, this is the last opportunity to fill out a speaker card if you wish to speak during public comment. Please complete a request form located in the alcove to the left of the double doors as you enter the boardroom. Please complete the white speaker form if the item you wish to speak about is on the agenda and a blue speaker form if the item you wish to speak about is not on the agenda. Please ensure that the speaker form is placed in the designated bin in the alcove. Excuse me. Student board members? Okay, thank you. Hey Trinity.
All right. Hello, everybody. I hope you guys all had a really good spring break because I know I did. It was very nice to have that week off school. Um, so today I'm just going to go over a few of like our spring athletics and then some upcoming events we have going on at Mission Hills. So first up, we have our girls lacrosse team. So our varsity girls have been doing really well this season with a record of five to four. I've been very lucky to be able to watch some of their games and it's just so fun being able to see my friends and just everybody else on the team work together and just celebrate and it's always a really fun environment. So I recommend that you guys go if you'd like to watch. Um, so their most recent game was on Monday against Classical Academy where they won with an outstanding score of 18 to three. Um, our JV girls have also been doing really good with their record of three to two. Um, and they also won their most recent game on Monday against Patrick Henry. Next up, we have our boys lacrosse, which I don't think is as fun as girls lacrosse, but each their own. Um, so our varsity boys played many tough teams so far, um, but they've always put their best out on the field. They have a current record of one to one, including our JV boys with the same score of one to one. But I'm sure that they'll get many more as the season progresses. Next up, we have our boys volleyball team, which have had a really amazing season so far dominating many of their recent games. So our varsity has a current record of eight to four, um, our JV with a record of four to zero, and then our novice with a record of two to zero. So our JV and novice have been undefeated this entire season, which I think is really cool. Um, next up, we have our girls beach volleyball team, which is actually really cool because it's one of our new spring sports over at Mission Hills. Um, we're also getting some new volleyball courts, um, beach volleyball courts put in, which I think is really cool. They've shared that they've had a really amazing time with their teammates and they're really enjoying the sport and they've been playing some pretty hard teams this season, some pretty like well-developed teams that have been there for years and years, but they're navigating it perfectly and they really enjoy it. So I'm glad that we decided to add it this year. Next up, we have our baseball team, um, which has also been playing some pretty hard teams this season, but they've managed to hold their own. So varsity is a current record of six to seven, while JV has a record of four to five and freshmen with a record of three to six. And I'm not sure if there's any baseball lovers out there, but I know that our team, I think they do good. So if you like watching baseball, you should come over to Mission Hills and watch. Now moving on to our softball team, um, and they've been doing really well this season. I feel like over the years, just watching them, they always do really well. Um, this season they are currently ranking second in both the Palomar League and the San Diego Division One League, which I think is really cool. And I know that so many of them put so much hard work and effort into this team and I just love watching it turn out well for them. So our varsity girls have a current record of eight to six and then our JV has a record of three to eight, but they're still doing good. Um, so the next one that I wanted to highlight is our Cardinal Alliance and I'm sure you hear all about them all throughout the year because it's not just like our band, but it's also, um, our winter guard and our color guard and Cardinal Alliance as a whole is just a really cool program over at Mission Hills. Um, and they're constantly working and practicing before school and after school and I hear them all the time and they even practice like on the weekends too for hours and it's just so cool to see it pay off for them because I know that they put so much effort in and I know that they're very passionate about it and I think it's really cool. So on Monday, um, the indoor and winter guard team had a friends and family night at Mission Hills where they got to perform and show off all the hard work they've been putting into this and their routines. Um, I would also like to share that their very own program leader, uh, Chris Coughlin was recently awarded Mission Hills Certified Employee of the Year. So I think that's really cool that they have someone so strong leading them. The next thing that I want to talk about is just some upcoming events we have going on at Mission Hills. So next week, April 16th and 17th at 6:00 PM, we have our Mission Hills Dance Team Spring Show Sunset Boulevard. Um, they've been working really hard on their routines. I have so many friends and I see them again, same with the Cardinal Alliance. They're there before school, after school, all the time, putting in so much work to their routines and their show, and I think it's really fun. So I also, I think you guys should attend this one because personally the spring show is my favorite because they have a special, um, like choreography that they do, which is the guy-girl dance. So it's really fun to see all the guys that aren't really like dance inclined, try and do their best to keep up with the girls and I always find it really funny. Um, it's interesting, interesting. I find it interesting. Um, and then as always on May 10th, we have our Mission Hills 2025 prom. So our theme this year is Golden Hour in Greece and it's at the Konikai Resort in San Diego, which I think is really fitting. Um, and I've gotten to see a little bit of it and I know it's going to look so good because there's so much like hard work put into our dances, um, especially from our ASP junior class officers who are in charge of planning prom. And they've been for many, many months. I always see them outside, sitting on their computers, working on all kinds of stuff. We're ordering decorations and just working on making sure the venue looks perfect and they always do amazing. I'm so excited to attend this year. Um, and then as always, thank you guys for listening and go Grizzlies.
By cha- by chance, do you know if, uh, the Grizzlies won, uh, the ladies softball team against Ramona High? I saw them blow into my parking lot the other day.
I can check for you. I'll check.
And just so you're aware, uh, Mr. Coffin was also named one of the two San Marcos Unified School District Teachers of the Year for the entire district this year.
Trinity, I wanted to give a shout out to your girls lacrosse team. Um, they are awesome. Not only are they a great team, but they have been so great with the younger girls, like the K through eight group. Just like yesterday, I heard they went to the K through eight practice and brought them Kona ice and they're doing these clinics with them and they're getting them pumped up because it's kind of a newer sport for a lot of these kids, you know, so just wanted to give them a shout out. I think it's pretty awesome.
Very good. Next we have, uh, Dr. Johnson, superintendent update.
Thank you. Couple, sorry. Yes, I was just about to say, uh, so, so our two board representatives that are two student board representatives who are scheduled for this evening is Mission Hills and Twin Oaks High. And the Twin Oaks High student, sorry, thank you for reminding, I was about to say it and then I forgot. Uh, Twin Oaks High student actually graduated, you know, those students are on another schedule. So, so that's a really good thing. And, and Gar said on, on short notice, I couldn't get you somewhere else. So it was just going to be Trinity, uh, this month and Sydney can't stay away. She loves the, she loves the, the board meeting. So she came for support. So thank you, but we did not put her on the spot to do it on impromptu. Couple of items for the board, uh, this evening. First of all, I know I have, I have mentioned to you a number of times in the past, the this North County Superintendent Network that we've been working on and we're almost done for this year and we're going to gear up again for the fall. But I wanted to give a little bit more, um, background kind of on what this group has been up to. It's really exciting work. It's really, it's really inspiring. Um, forward-looking work. So, uh, the vision of this group, as you know, this is a group of about 11, 12, 13 districts across North County and North County Coastal. Um, and the vision when we started out was to be a model innovation kind of region where all learners are thriving. Uh, with partnership among districts to achieve whole learner outcomes. Those two, there's two things in that sentence that are actually really important. Partnership among districts is not all as common as you might think it is. I mean, people are on our own islands and we're doing our own thing and there can be places where it's actually very competitive, but, um, the, the districts across North County were really very, very collaborative. So it's exciting to do this work. Um, learner-focused, innovative leadership, integrity, courageous action. You see the values there. What has emerged over, um, the course of the past two, two years is kind of a common set of core, um, practices or systems that we are working on developing together. Which you see bulleted out there, reports of a graduate strategic plan, uh, competencies and progressions, all three of which we have here in the district. A scorecard or accountability metrics, which we are developing as you, as you know, you saw a first draft of that earlier this year. These things are important because as I mentioned before, for 22, 23 years, we were under NCLB. Um, and in California at our EPI scores and it really, really narrowed. We had all these conversations when we were doing our strategic plan and our portrait a couple of years ago, but um, for, for a long time, several decades, the definition of what a successful student looks like was very, very narrow and it was pretty much show me your grades, show me your test score. That's all I need to know. Um, after NCLB kind of expired, that opened up a conversation amongst many of us uh, to, you know, what, what really are the metrics that we would want to look at? What, what really do we want to make sure that our students are, are leaving us with? What are those companies? That, that opened up the whole portrait of a graduate, uh, conversation. And so it's really exciting to be able to do this work uh, with other North County districts and some of the, the gentlemen you see here, the, the, I'll call them the veterans on the right side of this photo are, um, some really, really renowned international researchers. The guy third from the right there is Dr. Michael Follin. I, I think I unabashedly called myself a fanboy. I was reading his stuff when I was in my master's program in 96 or whenever that was and, um, which is really cool. I, I will say, I tell you, I told Dr. Campbell this, there was a, a meeting earlier this year. We had the group meeting. I walked into the room and Dr. Follin turned and said, hi Andy. And I was like, I'm done. I am done. I am on first name basis. He knows who I am, so I can, I can retire. No, but it's been really exciting. So another part of this particular meeting that I wanted to highlight for you, this, as you can see, this last meeting a couple of weeks ago was held at Cal State San Marcos. And as part of our meeting, we had a chance to, um, uh, hear from a couple of the professors there. Uh, particularly they were talking to us about what students, what, from their perspective, what students need to be successful. In other words, like when they're seeing students not be successful, like what's going on with them? That was really helpful for us as, as K-12 educators. And these were the three things they listed, which was really, really interesting. The first one, they said cognitive patience. So for the students who are in the, in the room this evening, I want you to hear this. The professors at Cal State were saying that many of, that what you're going to, what you're going to have in college is, is hard. It's not, you're not going to get it after the first lesson, second lesson. You've got to stick with it. And so what they were saying was if the students can just learn cognitive patience, like it's going to be hard. I'm going to need to keep working at this and eventually the light bulbs will start going on. Um, you'll be okay. And there are some kids who just, for, for whatever reason, they just get too frustrated and they give up and that's going to be hard. Those other two are also really, I thought, really interesting, curiosity and fearlessness and learning. I'll put those together. Excuse me. And what they meant by that was, it was really fascinating. What they said was that they're noticing that many of the students that are coming out of K-12 systems are very accustomed to, they spent four years, even more maybe. Show me what I have to do to get the grade, to get the GPA, to get the points, which I understand. Um, but, but they get to the college level and they're nervous to try something new, whether it be a new course or a new assignment or a new project or whatever, because they're too concerned about getting the points. And so they said, you gotta, you gotta let that go a little bit. This is college. This is a time when you can really branch out, spread out, try new things, do new things and don't worry so much about the things that, that we probably have all inculcated in you for the past four years. So I thought that was really interesting. Um, we're pretty much concluded for this year, but I'm really looking forward to, uh, the work next year. And we're now to the, to the, to the, uh, the point where we're going to start bringing in ed services folks and other people to really start putting meat on some of these bones. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit more of that background. Okay. Now for something completely different. I wanted to give another update. I've been doing, uh, giving updates the past couple of meetings about the ongoing kind of federal Department of Education, California Department, things, uh, that have been happening. So there was, uh, last week, a couple of um, communications between the federal DOE and the California, the CDE. Um, and I'm going to go ahead and just read through some of the, what's on this slide because I think it's important. So the Department of Education last week sent a letter to the CDE requiring the state to certify their compliance with anti-discriminate, anti-discrimination obligations in order to continue receiving federal financial assistance. You may or may not have seen that in the news. There was, there was, um, uh, some news coverage around that. The certification form, from what I understand, again, it went, did not go to local districts. It went to the CDE. Essentially says that education agencies cannot discriminate on the basis of race and that the DOE believes that some diversity, equity and inclusion programs may unlawfully do so. That's their, that's their assertion. And so they were requiring the CDE to make a, to, to file the certification. Following that communication that went to the CDE, the CDE then communicated with all local districts through that state, and this is what they said. Uh, in part, as we review the requested certification, we want to assure you that the CDE and local education agencies in our state that receive federal funds do regularly provide assurances that programs and services are and will be in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. California's LEAs have already submitted such assurances for 2425. In addition, LEA compliance with Title VI and other laws is monitored annually through the state's federal compliance monitoring process and multiple accountability mechanisms. The CDE plans to respond to the ed department on behalf of the state and its LEAs by the requested date. And they said, they told us, we will share a copy of our response for you, for your information once we submit it. So again, this is, this is just a long-winded way of saying to be continued. Uh, we're still monitoring and waiting to see kind of what happens, but um, I wanted to highlight this because I know when, when these things hit the papers or they hit the news, you get the little, you know, little blurb and people start wondering, okay, so is something going to change? What, what is, what's, what's happening? What does all mean for us? Um, again, in our, in our district, it is still, we're waiting to see how this, all this stuff plays out. So, um, setting the, the legal kind of wranglings aside for the moment, I think it is important to talk again about the district's equity work. Um, and, um, just to highlight that the, the heart of our work here in the district, um, is to make sure that we, over time, we are developing and building a system that works for all students, not just some students, not most students, but all students. Um, and that's, uh, what is in our strategic plan. So, um, you know, these laws are going to play out the way that they play out. Um, and we'll comply with whatever changes are mandated for us. But I did want to take a moment and just highlight what, what we have in our strategic plan and our Board of Trustees, uh, adopted equity statement. This is not new to you. You've seen this before, but I want to say this is really important because when we were doing our strategic plan with three years ago, we, the board was very clear about, we want to make sure that, that equity is a part of what we do and, and, and that we're achieving these outcomes for all students. Um, one of the conversations we had at that time was let's, let's go, let's take some time and let's actually define what we mean by equity. Because I have said equity is one of those words that you say it to five people and you get 10 different definitions of what it means. So let's put it in plain English and let's get it in our plan. So, um, I actually, I'm going to take a second and just read this. Uh, because this, I think this is a well-crafted statement. The portrait of a graduate is a promise that we've made to every SMUST, SMUSD student. And we are committed to providing an unparalleled educational experience, which is in our mission statement that you read this morning or this evening, that prepares every graduate to be future-ready, from the most able to the most vulnerable of our students. Racial, social, economic, social or cultural factors should not predict whether or not students are prepared for college, career and civic engagement. So to deliver, to deliver on that promise, we'll continually reflect on and refine our instructional practices to ensure they're meeting the needs of all learners. We'll ensure that every student feels connected to school and is engaged, challenged and inspired in their learning. We'll provide the support needed for each student to develop academic proficiency and the competencies outlined in our portrait of a graduate. We'll identify and address district systems, policies and our practices that are unintentionally getting in the way of the success of students. We'll ensure that our campuses are safe, welcoming and inclusive places for all students, staff members and families. We'll help students discover and cultivate their unique gifts, talents and interests that each one possesses. And we'll partner with our families and our community to support the success of all SMUC students with empathy, curiosity and respect. So again, this is an aspirational statement, clearly. Um, are we there yet? Is this the reality for every single one of our 19,000 plus students? No, it's not. Uh, but our goal is to over time, make sure that our systems are serving all of our kids. And that's, at the end of the day, that's all our equity work is. Um, I think actually, I don't, uh, the, on my previous slide, I had the, the acronym DEI. I think that's the first time I've ever even typed that, that acronym. We just, it's not. Um, it's not something that we're, that we're, um, concerned about. Uh, this, this is the statement that, that I think the board, well, that I know the board has adopted and that our, that our staff is, uh, working on. So I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. And, um, a great example of that is Rising Stars. So you, the board is aware that our San Marcos Chamber of Commerce honors every month Rising Stars from one from San Marcos High, one from Mission Hills and one from Twin Oaks each, each month. And I wanted to highlight these students in particular because last month, they're always inspiring. I mean, Dr., what is it you always say? This is the best Tuesday morning of the month? Yeah. It's, 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 it's really phenomenal. Um, and I'm so appreciative again to this, to the Chamber of Commerce. The mayor is always there. If she can be there, there are city councilmen, this members there when they can be there. There's, uh, local businesses. It's really great. Um, and this last, this last month was really, really inspiring. Now these three students, their stories are theirs to tell. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to go through all of it, but just to tell you that each one of them has a really compelling story. It's heartwarming. It's heartbreaking in some instances, but each one of them, it's inspiring because the, the reason they're honored is because they've overcome challenges that quite frankly, you listen to them and you're like, I don't know how you even can stand up there and I mean, you're 16 years old, you're 17 years old and I couldn't imagine going through some of the things that you're describing that you're going through right now. It's, it's, it's one of those ones that if, if, you know, whatever, whichever one of us has to be there, we are always at each one of these, uh, these rising stars because it's really phenomenal. So Jason, Jason, who you met last month, uh, with the RISAS group, uh, and Krista and Karen shared some stories and it was really, really phenomenal. And just want to highlight a couple of other, uh, amazing staff members. I always like to do that. So Ani Diaz Chavez, uh, was, she's a community liaison here and she was recently honored at the Empowering Latinos Futures Conference. And she's going to be on the cover of North County and Florida Magazine. So that's really exciting. Um, and she's got a big smile there. So we wanted to highlight that. And Crystal Thomas, our FFA, uh, teacher at San Marcos High, so Ag teacher at San Marcos High has been named finalist for Ag Educator of the Year and that's across 13 states. So we're pulling for her, we're cheering for her, we're crossing our fingers for her. And we believe that Crystal is most, most deserving of that, of that honor. So congratulations to Crystal. And then finally, I just wanted to remind everybody that, that on May 1st, it's a little earlier this year just because of calendars and scheduling, but, uh, this is wow, three weeks away. Amy, are you ready? Are we ready? We'll be ready. We'll be ready. We're doing our, we're doing our year in review and this is always a, a fun annual event just to have uh, the board come together and hear from staff and students about all the amazing things that have happened throughout the year across our district and I want to make sure everybody marks their calendars. We'll have a reception at 3:30. Last year we had farm animals. We don't know farm animals this time, right? Okay. We've had the band out there before. I, I said, we had, yeah, we had, oh, we, we do have baby pigs. I, I recommended bringing a steer. We have, we, they're totally cool. We had that, we had the goats here last time. This time I recommended, why don't we bring all the steer? We got like four or five big giant steer. They didn't like that idea. But the pigs, the piglets is not a bad idea at all. So we'll see, we'll see what we can pull off. So anyway, I would like to everybody to, I hope everybody marks their calendars and can join us for that. Um, on tonight's agenda, we do have Correa, right? Is Correa here? I didn't see her there. You guys are. Oh my gosh. All of a sudden I had a moment of panic. Creo Elementary School is going to be presenting on their, um, on the amazing work that they're doing at their school. I'm super excited to hear about the, an update, an update from the group working on middle school experience, particularly at San Marcos Middle School. So that's a big, big happy lift and uh, you guys have been doing amazing work. So excited to hear that. And then we have the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee on tonight's agenda. And with that, we are off and running. If I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so at this time.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you for, um, can we hear me? Hello?
Are you on?
I am on. Yeah, it says I'm on. Um, I just wanted to thank you. There we go. Ooh, good job. Thanks. Uh, I just wanted to thank you for, uh, speaking out loud our affirmation and our commitment to equity and inclusion. Um, it's something that the board worked really hard on and, um, I know that the, uh, the groups that need to hear it, really need to hear it. And so I think that the more that we can say those things out loud, I think, you know, um, it's, it's good to, to reaffirm our commitments and I appreciate you, um, making a point of doing that.
I wanted to, oh. Now we are on, we are cooking with gas. Um, at the beginning of the presentation, you shared the photo of you with the other superintendents and then those three bullet points that the Cal State professors had suggested. And I just wanted to call out that I think it's amazing that our district is thinking about things holistically and we're partnering with the local university because I don't think that's standard. You know, I'm kind of new to all this, but I don't think that every K through 12 district is thinking holistically, talking to universities, finding out what those gaps are and trying to close them. So thank you. I thought that was really, really neat and, um, helpful for all of us, all the stakeholders to think about, okay, how are we getting these kids ready and are we talking to the next group that's going to inherit them? So thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I want to say in fairness, I know that we have other school districts that do similar things. Uh, but I didn't tell you guys this either. I was invited to speak on a podcast just today, uh, with a couple of their superintendents and the host actually said that. He said, I know about San Marcos High that, or San Marcos Unified, that you guys, he called us the poster child for those kinds of partnerships with our local universities. And we're all right here and they, we often talk about San Marcos being that educational hub of North County. And so, yeah, thank you. It's, it's an important efforts.
Thank you. Well said. Next we have presentations. I'd like to call up Correa Elementary School Principal Amanda Keaton.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Johnson, our cabinet and our board members. I know we have some new board members. You haven't met us just yet. My name's Amanda Keaton. I'm the proud principal of Correa Elementary.
Good evening. And I'm Shannon Williams, our assistant principal. And we just want to let you know, Rio is one of those amazing schools that even though it's San Marcos Unified, we actually reside in Carlsbad. And so we have a really cool and unique community and we're just going to show you all about it tonight. So normally when we've come before.
So normally, when we've come before, we've brought students with us because we love to show off our students. They're so innovative, they're so creative, and they just want to be heard. And I told them, you guys, I just don't know that we're going to be able to do that this time. But you know what? We couldn't get away from it. So we just have a little short snippet, especially for our new board members, so you could just get a little idea about Creo Elementary.
Fifth graders who display good character traits and are hardworking apply to be both a cult. Both the cult is character traits in action.
Are you seriously doing my job right now?
Guys, what's up?
Well, we wanted to show the school before at our school. What better place to bring them than the principal's office?
Well, I guess that's a pretty good idea.
Hey, let's go check out some places on campus. The STEM lab is right here, let's go say hi to Ms. Amies.
And I'm Daisy, this is our Creo garden. It is run by wonderful PTO members. We grow some vegetables here. Let's see what else is in our garden. Hi, this is the middle of our garden. Pine dust is the new Creo ranch. That's where we got our name. And over here, we have some rose bushes and birds of paradise.
Hi, this is Penny and Jessie. We're checking out the music room. Let's go say hi to Ms. O.
This is our music room.
Welcome to our library. We're going to say hi to our amazing librarian, Ms. McCoy.
Library, how are you guys?
Good.
Glad you're here. Our library at Creo is one of the very best places in school because this is where all of the kids at Creo feel connected to their friends and their teachers. They find books with characters that match their own stories and with characters that have experiences different from theirs. And it's our home base for our student leadership programs like Student Council and Library Leaders.
Hi, my name's Nikica. And I'm Cora. As you may have heard, our school is currently under construction. Creo is getting a brand-new turf field and running track, as well as a new blacktop area with basketball courts and goalposts. We can't wait!
Hi, this is Jacob. And I'm Kai. And this is where we line up in our fitness teams. Here's our wonderful teacher, Ms. B.
Okay, yep, that's our fifth grade cult TV, and they're just amazing. So I love that they put that together. Yes, so highlighting some of the things that make Creo the special place it is. You saw our physical education program led by Mrs. Benninger. And we're fortunate to have a robust running club. Students are running actively even without a track. We've made a track around the library and through the hall. And we have parent volunteers every morning out there with their iPads, scanning the kids' QR codes. And we have kids that have accumulated over 200 miles already this school year. So we love our running club and we're excited for the district track meet coming up in May. And then as you saw, we have our wonderful music program led by Mrs. O. And we're looking forward to our honor choir performance with the district next week. Our fabulous library led by Mrs. McCoy. And she also is our lead student council teacher. And they come up with skits and help us teach our character traits each month to our students. And then we're so fortunate to have a PTO-sponsored STEM lab with Mrs. Amies, who works with our students and our teachers twice a month, where students come to the STEM lab and get to do hands-on activities, anything from coding to robotics, building, Legos, so many great experiences that tie to what they're doing in the classroom. And then she also creates our cult TV with our fifth grade student leaders. Another thing that makes Creo the special place it is, is our annual Marine Corps Food Drive and Flag Salute that we do each year. And this is a longstanding tradition we've had at Creo for over 20 years, where our students prepare and sing patriotic songs. We invite Camp Pendleton Marines to come down. And we invite any active and retired military members in our community. We prepare breakfast for them and they come and enjoy breakfast. And then we have a student-led performance to thank them for their service. And then also, we collect, it used to be canned food drive is how it started. And then over time, we realized that there's other needs. And so this year, we started a household items drive. And we were collecting everything from bathroom towels, toilet paper, diapers, toothpaste, toasters. So we were so fortunate to be able to provide those donations to our local Marines.
And KUSI came this year too. And they filmed us for their, for their mourning. I just wanted to just share with our new board members, we had four strategic goals moving into the academic portion that we focused on this year. And Goal Three is really where we have spent the heart of our work with our staff and our students. And that's talking about GLAD strategies in the next-gen professional development training. We're going to share with you some of those things right now. But I want to know, I want to share with you where that all stemmed from. Over the last couple of years, we have noticed that our students that are emergent bilingual, perhaps their free or reduced lunch, or they're students with disabilities, they were continuing to perform in the lower brackets when we talk about LPAC or the CASP assessments. And specifically, the piece that was holding back our students from either getting a good score on the CASP or reclassifying on the LPAC was writing. And so we really took a hard look about a year ago. And we started to look at what are our systems in place to make sure that students have access to strong writing, you know, curriculum and instruction. And so we partnered with Sylvia Jacobson, who is our Director of Multicultural Education. And even though we cannot do a full, full-out GLAD program, it requires a lot of money and funding that we don't always have. We, she said, what about doing a next-generation one? Where we take concepts from GLAD and we use those in our classroom with our staff and our students. And GLAD is Guided Language Acquisition and Design. I'm going to scoot over our actions so we can get right to it. And that's specific strategies that we use with our students in our teaching to really enhance a student's oral capacity to share what they know. And by building their oral content and their knowledge content, they're able to write better, they're better readers, and they just become more proficient in their output. And Shannon's going to share with you a couple of the steps that we went through to get there.
So Mrs. Keaton and I worked with Sylvia in August before even our teachers and students were on campus to develop a plan of how we could roll this out and, and get this instruction at the teacher's fingertips and then get these strategies in the classrooms so that our students had access to building their vocabulary and becoming stronger writers. So we originally started with Sylvia coming to our very first staff meeting in September and launched our goals for writing and started teaching about how we can bring these strategies to life in our classroom. And then we were able to provide our teachers with a half-day grade-level release with either Sylvia or Malia, who came. And they modeled strategies for us. And this is actually Malia in one of our fourth-grade classrooms where she was modeling some of these GLAD strategies so teachers could see it in action with their own students.
And then this is just an idea of, just to share with you guys, this is what happens when GLAD gets in the hands of teachers and students. They absolutely just explode with ideas. And many of these photographs that we wanted to share with you, those are students working together independently without the teacher, sharing their ideas, working with teamwork. We have different strategies that we've got on here where we have our, I always call them the wrong thing. I always call them gallery, or their observation charts. There's, with God, there's so many components to it. Mrs. Yates is doing, she's doing expert groups. Mr. Retzer is doing a pictorial input. And through the use of images and graphics, kids can start to make connections about what they know about language. And then this is just some of the output. This is all of our kids' writing, all of the things that they could do. And we had to take a picture of Mohammed and put it in here. He has become an exceptional writer, writing more than, he's only a second grader, writing multiple pages about robots and how they help people. So we wanted to make sure we could capture that. But as you can see, it's just visually, the kids are just, they're looking through pictures, they're adding their details, and their language abilities are just coming to life. And our teachers are so excited about the program. So this was one of the things that we really wanted to highlight with you guys. And we know it's a multi-year process, and we're excited to see some gains. We're a little anxious, we're a little anxious, but we're also very excited to see how our students perform on this year's LPAC and CASP.
And of course, we have to recognize, not only was Jamie Laura, one of our fifth-grade teachers, recognized as Teacher of the Year for Creo, but she is one of San Marcos Unified's Teachers of the Year. So we're so grateful to have Jamie at Creo. She was willing to take the risk this year to partner up with our fifth-grade education specialist, Carlos Correja, where they have truly embraced the co-taught model for fifth graders. We know that as the Creo fifth graders make their way to SEMs, they have the option of a co-taught or a co-lab model. And so we wanted to really get our fifth graders ready for that experience. And it has been so powerful and amazing, not only for our special education students, but all the other students in the classroom. There's two adults in there constantly. We don't have kids coming and going to get services and then coming back in and feeling like, where do I pick up? What did I miss? So we've been very fortunate to do this co-teaching model. And we're hoping that we can continue that next year with our fifth graders to prepare them for middle school. And we just want to say thank you and to our new board members, just to give you a little bit of insight. Shannon and I are not just administrators, we're administrators married to teachers that teach in San Marcos Unified School District. Both PE teachers, by the way, so we can connect really well on that. And we're also parents of San Marcos Unified students. So just to show you that we are so invested in the success of every single child in our district. So thank you very much for having us. Any questions?
Questions? I just thought the GLAD program just sounds incredible. And I also like the resourcefulness of, you know, not knowing all the details, but you, you didn't have the budget to roll it out, maybe in the most ideal circumstances, but you were able to make it work with what you could and do this sort of modified program. And so it's really neat to see the, see the evidence of that. And yeah, excited to hear more.
I just wanted to thank the kids for putting the video together because I haven't been on campus yet, so it gave me an idea and seeing some of the rooms and everything. So it was great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is our middle school experience, oh no. Yes, Middle School Experience Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Nikki Durana.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Durana. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for San Marcos Unified. Good evening, board members, Dr. Johnson. I was so thrilled and overwhelmed when Dr. Campbell asked if I would come present some of the dynamic work that's happening in middle school experience. Because as you look across the county and you look at districts who are engaged in this work, we really are leading the way in making significant changes in middle school. I wanted to do a little grounding work with us before we got started in terms of the Portrait of a Graduate. When you look across the Portrait of a Graduate, you could see middle school experience all over the place. But I really wanted to bring to light the objectives that you see here because they exemplify and they articulate what are the outcomes we want to see as we're shifting and redefining what middle school looks like for all students. It talks about identifying and building individual strengths and interests, making sure that we're learning and growing with the community, the classroom community and the school community, and that we feel safe and that we belong on each of our campuses. I also wanted to take a moment and bold each and every in these statements because when we started this work with middle school, we talked to our middle school kiddos. And what they started to say to us was, it's working for some, but it's not working for all. So when we ask our middle school site admin and our teacher leaders to engage in this work, each and every student is at the forefront of their thinking. But I'm here to talk a little bit about the work itself. And so I wanted to take a moment and talk about how we've gone about doing this work. It's really important in San Marcos Unified to ground ourselves in some research so we have some backbone of knowledge of how we're moving through. The team, site administrators, teacher leaders dove into some grounding pieces of research. One of them was the key findings from How People Learn. How does somebody move from being a novice in something to being an expert in something? And what does that look like? We talked about the stages of development. We looked at the brain and how does the brain change from being an infant to being a 22-year-old adult? And we also looked at adolescent development. And you guys can imagine in middle school, that is key, key research, right? From those conversations we had, what we recognized is that to be able to achieve the objectives that we spoke about on the last slide, we needed to implement some learning conditions. And so what you see on the right-hand side is what the team collabored around to develop four different learning conditions, and we call them the pillars, that we are grounded in community and connection, that our learning is personalized and flexible, that we co-create through shared power, and that kids are engaged in things that are skills-driven and relevant to them. Additionally, our middle school principals are engaged in continuous improvement cycles. So what they've done is throughout the summer and even starting the spring and into the next summer, they identify some leadership moves that they want to be able to do to implement these conditions. They identify teacher behaviors they want to see in the classroom and what they want to see from students. They gather data, they analyze the data, they review it, and then they revise their plan as they move forward. Lastly, a lot of this middle school experience is in the classroom itself. And what we recognized is that we needed to engage our middle school teacher leaders in the methodologies of universal design for learning. And if you don't know what that is, this is a methodology that really centers that there is a myth of average. There is no average kid. Each kid is individual. And how do we then anticipate barriers that some kids may have getting to the experiences that we are offering? And how do we design around those barriers? Over the course of the year, you have seen two of our three amazing middle schools. And tonight, you're going to hear from one more. So I just want to kind of highlight where we've been. Katie Buffen and her team from Woodland Park came to talk to you about how they are grounded in community and connection, that the students are agents of their own learning. And they, they have really taken that research and those theories into practice when they talk to you about the Empathy Project, the Community and Culture ASB. And this Bulldogs Journal, and I don't know if you guys remember this piece, but every Tuesday morning, every single kid and adult on campus takes time to do journaling and reflection and metacognition. While that sounds really nice, that is grounded in the research that to be able to be a learner, to move from novice to expert, you have to engage in metacognition. So they've taken this research and really put it into practice at Woodland Park. Changing your thinking, thinking about your thinking, what did I used to know? What do I know now? How do I apply it forward? Thank you for that. You've also heard from Tricia's story and her team, how they are grounded in the skills-driven and relevant pillar. They've really taken that learning as an integrated experience. It's not just an academic endeavor, but it's also a social emotion endeavor. And they talked with you about the Probability Carnival, the Electoral College. They even did a science ethics fair. And if you guys remember that, kids had to take a position on ethics, designer DNA, or are we going to use GMOs? And they had to convince funders to invest in their research, right? So they've taken this idea of being skills-driven and relevant to heart over at Santa La Hoya Middle School. And in just a moment, you're going to hear from the amazing San Marcos Middle School, Nikki Scott and her team, about how they are grounded in community and connection. They are taking very seriously the stages of brain development. What does it look like at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade? They've taken to heart, what is this learning is integrated? How do we make something? How do we create experiences that are interconnected? And they've done so through small learning communities, restorative accountability projects, which I'm so excited for you to hear about because it's really about how students develop their own agency, how successful they've been in the ICANN attendance matters, and their social skills group. So without further ado, it's my whole segue to San Marcos Middle. Come on up.
While they're coming up, I wanted to provide a little, a little context. Don't turn my volume up, Tom, I'm going to scare everybody here. But just to remind the board of how we even landed on this, this work originally, was when we were doing our Portrait of a Graduate. And we said, you know, this is, this is the outcomes we want for all of our students. And then we started looking at our system from, you know, TK to 12, pre-K to 12, really, and talking about, you know, where our kids are, many kids are being successful, where students aren't being as successful, what's happening? And one of the questions we asked, is there a, is there any, any trends around like a time when this happens? And the answer on that question kept coming back, middle school. This is the time when kids are making decisions about who they are as students and is school my thing? And it's, it's a really pivotal time. So that's where we decided, let's, let's really put some effort, effort and emphasis on the middle school experience. Our first thing, Nikki didn't mention this, but one of the things we Our first thing, Nikki didn't mention this, but one of the things we'd start to, okay, let's, let's get out there and let's see what good models are out there that we might be able to replicate. And it, crickets. There really aren't any really great models that we could find that were replicable. And there are some, there are some encouraging practices out there that we certainly did learn from. But I, the way I like to put it is, if this is a, this is a switch that if it could have been flipped, like somebody would have flipped it a long time ago. It's just not that kind of a work. So I really, really, really appreciative of the team for what they're doing, because what you're going to hear on a couple of slides is going to sound great. It's a ton of work. It's a really, really heavy lift and requires perseverance and requires leadership and requires patience and tears and sweat and all the things. So a little bit of context for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And the end, you did it. You did our presentation. Well, good evening, everyone. I am the proud principal, Nikki Scott, of San Marcos Middle School. So good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. And my mantra is, it takes a village. And so tonight, you're going to hear from the village, encompassing not just certificated staff members, but also classified. As Nikki shared with you, our San Marcos Middle School implementation, we really took a deep dive into our systems. Because part of changing the system or middle school redesigning is really looking at, how do we holistically support the whole child? And so the wheel really shows that it takes these systems of academic change, it takes a system of behavior, attendance, and also social skills, because the brain of the middle school student is evolving, always evolving. And if you know middle school students, they need a lot of support. And so knowing that, we had to change the conditions at our school. We looked at fifth graders coming into middle school, and we knew that the connectedness, how do we get students to be connected? We had to really change the system of, how do we bring them into the fold of middle school? And so we developed a small learning community, taken from the research. We know that when students come into a new environment, they need a lot of support. And so you'll hear tonight how we were able to develop the Small Learning Community, also known as SLC. We also looked at our behavior system. We moved and shifted from the punitive, most definite, deficit mindset of how do we condition behavior? And rather than giving students, suspending students, which really goes against that whole community and connectedness, we took a dive into how do we restore students through a restorative approach, also known as our RAP, called Restorative Accountability Project. So you'll hear a little bit about that. We know that students who don't come to school, right? Their grades are affected, their social skills are affected. And so we really took, looked at our systems of attendance and how we looked at our data, and we got to the root of how students and why students were not coming to school. And so you'll hear a little bit about our system approach of attendance. And then lastly, social skills. Every Monday morning, we have social skills at San Marcos Middle School. So there is a lesson that basically teaches students how to be citizens in their world. Again, looking at the child through a holistic approach and centering our systems around each child. And so with that, I'm going to ask my team to introduce themselves, their role, and talk about these four areas.
Hi, I'm Charity Shepherd. I am the future-ready middle school TOSA at San Marcos Middle School. And I'm joined by Melanie Lamer, who is one of our SLC teachers and our sixth grade math teacher. And we're excited to share just a quick overview of San Marcos Middle School's Small Learning Community or the SLC.
Other members of our SLC team include Jessie McIntyre, Samantha Seward, Jen Flanagan, and Michelle Sinini. One thing that makes our team unique is that we don't have a traditional leader. Instead, we each contribute based on our strengths and our passions. This collaborative model allowed us to design experiences that were both standards-aligned and deeply meaningful for students.
Last year, we participated in the Middle School Redesign Training, which challenged us to rethink issues around engagement, behavior, and academic success. To better understand the student experience, I conducted empathy interviews with our sixth through eighth graders. And then I also went to our fifth graders, the three feeder schools that we have. And the quotes you'll hear today as we speak come directly from those interviews. So students' voice, we decided, or we looked at, and brain research really formed the foundation of our learner design process.
And that feedback led us to build our learning model. And that learning model is our, around our central, three essential pillars here, the first of which is belonging and emotional safety. The transition to middle school can feel isolating. One elementary student said, "I want to belong." Another shared, "I'm nervous about making friends. I don't feel like I'm going to fit in." A middle schooler reflected, "Elementary felt like a family. Middle school just feels like a bunch of people going through routines."
Brain science tells us that relationships are the foundation of learning, and that students can't fully engage until they feel emotionally safe. Our SLC builds that foundation. Our five teacher team shared 156 sixth-grade students, allowing for strong relationships and support. Classrooms were grouped together to promote connections, and students started each day in their den. A home base, where they created den names and logos and competed in den team challenges. Den teachers also served as the primary contact for families, creating consistency and stronger partnerships. So our second pillar is personalized and relevant learning, is a common, it was a common theme in the interviews, and students, they felt more connected in classes where teachers got to know them, allowing learning to reflect their interests and needs.
The issue isn't necessarily ability, it's relevance, identity, and capacity. When learning is meaningful and appropriately challenging, students reengage. Our SLC supports this through responsive instruction guided by data and anchored in UDL strategies and project-based learning. The final pillar, shared ownership and student voice, also grew from student insights in last year's, last year's interviews. One middle school student said, "Teachers should have high expectations, but be willing to be flexible when needed." Another emphasized, creating expectations as a class, so everyone understands what's required.
This shows that students want to help shape their learning, not follow along. Our SLC fosters this through co-created norms, collaborative planning, and shared expectations. This balance of structure and student agency aligns with what brain research says adolescents need most: clarity, voice, and choice.
This year has been a lot of work, and yes, challenging at times, but the connections, engagement, and growth have made it all worth it.
Small learning communities aren't just a structural change, but a cultural shift, one that centers on belonging, relevance, and empowerment, so that every student is equipped to thrive. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Sanchez, and I am one of the school counselors at San Marcos Middle School, and I will be talking about attendance. So we have shifted the way that we've gone about helping students and our families with attendance. As you can see, in the previous year, we were well up above the 18, almost 18% in chronic absenteeism. And we have a goal this year to meet 13%. And as you can see, we are well on our way to reaching that goal. And so I will be talking about some of the things that we have implemented to help us reach this goal. And one big factor has been the shift that we have had with our home visits, and we have actually changed the name. It's now called Wellness Visits. And our Wellness Visits are conducted every Monday. We review data from the previous week, and we really focus on students and the why behind their absences. Phone calls are not enough, right? Sometimes you have to get in there and really face-to-face, meet with the families and see what is going on, and more specifically, coming at it in a way where students and families feel supported, and it's not punitive. And one way which we do this is by providing goodie bags. So as you can see, you received a goodie bag with a post-it, a postcard, and it has a really sweet message that we try to leave for students, along with our business card from our support team, as well as our administrator. If we aren't able to connect with the families or the student when we attend the welcome visits, then at least they have our information available on hand, where they can readily call us and reach out for any support that they may need. And that has been very impactful, as you can see our data shows, and also helps us create those meaningful connections and relationships. Because as we know, the more connected students feel, the more they're going to want to show up to school. And along with that, we have our SEL Monday Morning Lessons, in which we also help showcase different ways that students can feel empowered on campus, and helping them learn coping skills to manage with other stressors, including with their attendance, or what is impacting their attendance on our campus. And moving on, I will introduce our social worker, Deshaun Powell, who will kind of give you a little bit more insight on the groups that we have that support social emotional learning as well. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I am accompanying today with one of my practicing social workers from Cal State San Marcos. We cannot do the wonderful work we do at San Marcos without a team of people. And we have about seven amazing practicing social workers who assist me every day in dealing with social behaviors with our, with our kiddos. With our social groups, we run about, we've run about 10 groups between this semester and last semester. Using evidence-based practices and research, we've come up with these groups to deal with the strain that our kids and our families deal with on a daily basis. We used our Panorama data to identify the kids who's dealing with a lot of strain and emotional behaviors. And one of the ones I want to point out, that's new this year, is called Rising Together. That group was brought out because our kids were not connected to the school. And we also brought something different this year, was we did it in Spanish. And so I wanted just a lot, a small bit of time to allow my practicing social workers who ran that group to talk about the amazing work that she's done with connecting our kids, our EB students.
Hi, as was said, my name is Erica Jetta. I am a Cal State San Marcos student, my second year as a social worker. And I'm so excited to share with you a little bit more about the Spanish group for Rising Together. So one of the things I really want to highlight is that this is a culturally responsive and collaborative piece, where we take student initiative and their leadership into account as we talk about, like, well, where is, how do you want to be connected to the school? And they really come in excited, engaged, and just always asking about, like, when's the next time that we can meet? We see that they have decreased barriers. We know that with our Hispanic population, they sometimes have barriers with getting mental health services or getting the support they need. And so with this program, they are not only feeling much more connected to the school, they're also seeking help, they are just ready to learn. I'm always so blown away with just how engaged they are, how much they want to learn and just be part of the spaces. One of the things that we did was, we had them contribute to the San Marcos, San Marcos Middle School Rock Garden. They want to do more around the school campus, just to like show that we are here, we are part of the community. And so I think that just having this space for them, to give them a culturally safe space, a linguistically safe space, is very important to continue on with, like, following school years.
Thank you. As you look at some of the data we did, we did a pre-survey, and one of the questions that we ask in all our groups is, how do you feel about school? Do you like the school that you're at? And if you look at the survey, it just tells a story. And then we did a mid-survey, and what I noticed is that the disagree disappeared, the strongly disagree disappeared, and we have agree and totally agree about how they feel about the school. And this is just some of the quotes that we pulled out of some of that data that we received. And we know when the kids are dealing with strain, they have behaviors. When those behaviors go beyond what we can deal with, or what happens when they harm the community, we have our RAP program. So I'm going to let my other colleague talk about that program and how do we restore that.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ramon Torres, and I am the Lead Campus Supervisor at San Marcos Middle School. And I'm going to be talking to you guys today about Restore Accountability Projects, or RAP. Unfortunately, I didn't prepare a rap song about it, so I apologize about that. So what is it? So Restore Accountability Project is a new approach to restorative discipline using the power of accountability and restoration to really change the way discipline looks, not only for us, as staff members, but also the students and families. So we take that really seriously at San Marcos Middle School. So where did it start? It started from a training that some staff members went to, including our Assistant Principal, Ryan Gallego, who brought that concept back home to us and expanded upon it to really fit the needs of our students and really use, use the methods that we have already at school to, to, to create that, that scenario. And why we did it? As a school, community, we really observed that the conventional forms of discipline weren't really working. We saw the same kids getting in trouble for the same offenses. So we really wanted to change that and make a difference for that. The way we go about it is we start off with structured days, where students are escorted from class to class, usually by a campus supervisor. They'll guide them, they'll make sure they make it in class on time, and they'll really just watch them from, from a sort of as close enough distance to where the student is, knows that they, knows their expectations. And we do it to let them know that even though they're back from, from doing their either suspension or, or other discipline, that they are still not quite off the hook, and that we're going to make sure that, that they stay on top of things, build better habits and such. After that, we move towards our Accountability Workshops, which are, which students days after school, two days a week for an hour and a half. There is, we'll really start the whole process. They will work on a six to 10-site presentation that includes what their infraction was, what they, what they, why they did it. They actually have to do some research of what are the consequences, not only in the school system, but in the real world, what were, what would happen in the real world if they were to get in trouble for, for these infractions? Goes into what they learned, who it impacted, not only in the school, but maybe at home, and then what are they going to do to restore the relationship back with their school community? So yes, like I said, two days a week after school for an hour and a half. We schedule a date at that time, at the end of the workshop, for the Accountability Presentation, where we invite not only staff members, such as counselors, social workers, administrators, but also the families of the student. And if there was any victims for that infraction, we invite them as well, as well as their families. Going through the presentation, students, students will immediately recognize the power of accountability, because they see the faces of all the people that were impacted by their actions. They go through all the, all the components that they wrote about in their presentation through the workshop. And it really, you see the, you see the impact in their faces, they, a lot of times get emotional, families will get emotional. And it, you, you feel, you feel a sense of, of, you feel a sense of restoration in the room, because the student is then congratulated and introduced, reintroduced into the school as a better version of themselves. We, we either give them a handshake, fist bump, we let them know that from this, from this moment on, you are now, you are now a better, like I said, a better version of yourself. We know, we will no longer, well, not that we do, we do not see you as what you did, but how you accomplished this restoration. At San Marcos Middle School, we want every student to feel like they belong there. And that's, that's, that's what we do, all staff members, and we want the students to really know that they're all welcome, and we want them there. Go Lions!
And so just to conclude, yes, like Dr. Johnson mentioned, it is a lot of work.
And so just to conclude, yes, like Dr. Johnson mentioned, it is a lot of work. It, it takes time, effort, but most importantly, the love that we have for our kids. Because again, we know that the systems, past systems didn't work, historic systems didn't work. The data shows that if you do, continue to do something that is not working and you're getting the same results, it's time to make a change. And so we felt that, we did that, and we're ever evolving as a school. But we're in, we're going in the right place because we are seeing the positive outcomes. And that's pretty much it. That's San Marcos Middle. So thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question about the, the RAP, which I love. I'm curious what our, what are our processes for the students who were, who were victims? And how we help them feel safe at school? And also because like I know, as a board member, a lot of times when something gets to our level, we'll have someone say, you know, well, nothing happened, right? And we know something happened, but we can't really tell the student or the family what happened. And so that's a really disempowering feeling for someone who's been victimized to not know that, that this was dealt with. And so is there, are we thinking about what, how we can also bring back and, and have a student feel psychologically safe at school when they've been a victim?
Yeah. So as I mentioned, we're still evolving in our systems. And I think one of the systems that we talked about, and Coach can kind of add to this, is having check-ins with the students and having a trusted adult that if they're feeling a certain emotion or they're feeling unsafe, or they're feeling like they haven't gotten quote unquote "justice" in a way, but, and they have to speak to someone. The social worker is really the place and the space for students to get that support. The counselors as well, you know, someone that they trust that they can feel like they can pour out sort of like their pain, but also know that they have someone that is there to support them. Coach, I don't know, we, we talked about, and he can add to this, a layer of how do we then connect to our RAP process?
I think one of the big things that I do in, in this process is it's an opportunity to grab some supports, right, for, for both the student and the one who's the victim. And then do a safety plan and talk about some, some places on campus that you feel safe. One of those places is our wellness room, which a lot of kids participate in. And as much as activities we do and keep an eye on them, there's gonna be people who don't feel safe. And talk about that and ask them the question, how do we help you feel safe? And what are some things that we can do to help you there? And so that's how we combat that piece of it.
And just out of curiosity, let's say a student has been suspended because they got in a fight. Are there re-entry contracts that the students have to complete with the counselor, administration, and the parent?
So the, the re-entry program is with the AP, a counselor and myself, and we talk about those supports. And so one of those things we, we do is a Y trial. If, if the Y trial is not suitable, then it may be a one-on-one session, four or five sessions with me and talking about the strains and something that that kid is going through. And now there's an evaluation saying, hey, does he need outside supports if we cannot support him here? And the parents are there also.
And those are other means of correction?
Absolutely, absolutely. Because it may be something that's bigger than we can handle in the school setting. Again, we talk about strain, it may be divorce, it may be a lot of other things that's going on outside of the school that's in, causing the behaviors.
I just wanted to say I'm, I'm so impressed with this team. You can kind of see as you're interacting together, like you're a very cohesive group that is working towards a shared mission here. The SLCs I love, I told you that when we were visiting. But are they expanding them out next year to more?
I'm so happy you asked. Yes, so we piloted a small group of just four teachers, five teachers, sorry. And so we're gonna expand to the entire sixth grade because it's not fair that one group gets to get all the love, right? We want them all to feel loved. And so, yeah, we're going to expand it for next year. So we're really excited, right, team?
I got to check out the wellness room and it was pretty, pretty sweet. I loved it. I loved the presentation. I, I thought the way you described RAP was, you know, we have this kind of idea of like truth and grace and, and it seems like it's this perfect balance. The comment that you made about real world consequences when the students are researching, hey, if you did this when you were 18, out of high school, in the real world, like these are the consequences. And I think as a parent, when you talk to your own child about that, it oftentimes falls on deaf ears, you know, because your own child hears that over and over again. Well, if you did this when you're 18, blah, blah, blah. But to have you guys doing this and, and partnering with parents and giving these students this kind of sobering reality, like, hey, this, this could have happened in the real world. And I, I just think that's a really powerful message. So I'm really thrilled to hear that these kids are getting this and just that internalization that will happen as they make better decisions and, you know, preventing, preventing things that might otherwise happen if they didn't have this incredible program. So, thank you.
Just one last comment. Thank you. I mean, innovation at its best, creating self-awareness, because we all know that. That's very key for growth. And to your point, I, I mean, if they don't have that self-awareness, there's no growth. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I love this, by the way. Taking it back to my school. Communication session. Have a good evening. Per education code 35145.5 and government code 54954.3, members of the public have the opportunity to provide public comment on any agenda item as well as any non-agenda item that is within the subject juris, matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Bylaw 9323, individual speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item, except for our union representatives who have five minutes. In accordance with Board Bylaw 9323, public comments will be limited to 20 minutes per topic. Per the Brown Act, members of the board are limited in their ability to respond to statements or questions made during public comment. Unless an item has been placed on the published agenda, there shall be no deliberation nor action taken. The board may, one, acknowledge receipt of the information, report and comment; two, refer to the staff for further study; or three, refer to the matter, refer the matter to the next agenda. A recording is made of all open sessions of the governing board. Again, on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you in advance for helping us conduct this meeting respectfully. Suzie, do we have any speakers?
Yes, allegedly, Audra?
Touch that thing, it's dangerous. Three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. I was gonna try and time it too, because you guys should have a timer over here just in case. Is it where?
There should be.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's nice. Oh, there we go. Yeah, that's nice. That's really beneficial. Gotta know what time you got, right? So it's just interesting to live in a world where I feel like I don't belong in this world. And I don't, none of us should because it's inverted. And it's just sad to see all of the things that take place. And we all have a choice on how we deal with things and what we do with the information that we get. And, you know, there is, I feel like children are being robbed of their innocence. It's like I have so many notes, I don't even know how I'm gonna say all these things. But, you know, it's like watching everybody do the pledge of allegiance. I don't engage only because I feel like people are just going through the emotions and the motions of just doing it. And they don't really think about why we do it. You know, but we just kind of, it's like the group gets up, they say those things, does anybody really mean them? I mean, we say one nation under God, but we're trying to erase God. We call it a republic, but then people call it a democracy. So it's all this confusion. And it's sad because I feel like we encourage confusion with children. And, you know, when we do things like put litter boxes for children to say that they're a cat, it's sad because it's like they'll never be that. And, and the fact that we want to encourage that is actually doing a disservice to the children to do that. Because it's not as though they're gonna grow up and, and, you know, live in a cat house or a cage. I mean, some people actually do, and it's, it's actually sad to see. But I mean, we can't even define equity. We don't even know what a woman is. I mean, how, how do we, you know, determine what that is when all of a sudden it's like we gotta redefine it? We can't just say you're a man and you're a woman. Now anybody can be whatever they want. And it does, it stirs confusion, it stirs, you know, issues that, you know, I mean, how many people really were comfortable with their body or who they were when they were a kid? You know, we go through these things where we're confused. Every, we all have been. And then as you grow up, you start to understand things differently. But when we encourage the confusion, we're setting up for society to just, it's like we're not gonna know what anything is. We're always gonna constantly be redefining what things are. And we can't live like that. We can't just, you know, and it's like when you guys talk about safety for all, but it really isn't. Because if, if a little girl comes to a counselor or somebody and says, I don't feel comfortable, you know, changing with a boy, it's like, well, if you don't, then why don't you go down the, you know, to another building and change? So I mean, you can't say that you're making it safe for all when we're selecting who we're making it safe for. And in that, it's like we are, you know, if children are our future, what kind of a future do we have if we're just sowing confusion and, you know, telling them? I mean, that'd be like me saying I can go be the president if I want, I'm just gonna go take over the White House because that's what I identify as. That would be crazy for a lot of people. So I mean, we just need to be mindful of these things.
Thank you.
Carol Gendel?
Pleasure to talk to all of you this evening. My name is Carol Gendel and I do not have any children in the San Marcos school system nor grandchildren. My grandchildren are in Oceanside. I come here as a resident and a taxpayer to thank you for making the school system a quality space for learning and a safe and welcoming place for all students regardless of gender, race, immigration status, or any other qualification. All are welcome. I'm proud that my tax dollars support quality teachers and strong curricula for both academics and all the extras, music, drama, sports, and STEAM. It all matters. Thank you and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Plutchenik?
Good evening, board members. Vice President Andres Martin, Stacy Carlson, Member Heidi Herrich, Member Lena Mume, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Tiffany Campbell, and other assistant superintendents. My name is Dale Ziegman Plutchenik and I am President of the San Marcos Educators Association. SMEA represents over 1,000 members, not only teachers, but also counselors, social workers, nurses, speech language pathologists, school psychologists, and certified staff. SMEA wants to thank the board for its continued commitment to public education and public educators. I wanted to start by saying we support all students and we are SMEA. Part of the reason I always mention my full name is to honor my Polish immigrant grandfather, who I was named after, I was technically named after both of my grandfathers. But they had a long and lasting impact on me. Why I honor them, why I mention this and bring this forth in the message is to show in a way how I started my career to support all students. I learned from my father, who was in a system that they called sink or swim for English. And I thought, as I become an educator, I want to change that. I don't want to be part of the model. Obviously, that went away when I started in education to a way where we support our students. And so when I first started in San Marcos, I taught what was called sheltered English history to immigrants from all over the world in a way to support their English acquisition. That was the job title, right? But beyond that and how we would support students is helping them acclimate to a new culture and a new country and showing them love and support and seeing in every one of those kids, my family, my story. And saying, hey, I may not look like you, but I know your story. I've heard your story. I've lived your story with my family. I know what it's like to struggle. And this is just a part of the example of what educators do in our, in our district. We do so many things to support our students, such as run clubs during lunch and sometimes after school. Help organize and sponsor events such as our elementary track meets and our talent shows. Others help run AP seminar research events where students share their research projects to the community. We have award-winning music programs where our high school band directors spend hours after school with our students, providing a thriving arts education. Our high schools also sponsor the Empty Bowl Project, which was started by one of our educators at San Marcos High 16 years ago to support our students to learn the importance of giving back, the ripple of good, and how that affects everyone. This is an event where high school students learn to help others by producing and donating their pottery, oftentimes towards the end of their school year. This is their best work. They put in so much effort. And they give it away. And they give it away and the idea is to raise proceeds for student, for this pottery, excuse me, to earn money for local food banks to address food insecurities in our community. And some of those groups are San Marcos Boys and Girls Club, to mention one of many over the years they've done this. These are some of the large events we do as educators in San Marcos. But we also do small events, right? So it goes beyond reading, writing, arithmetic, science, art, and music. Teachers are here for all students to support our students because we believe in the future. And we, and as we always say, we do not choose our public, we educate our public. And as public educators, we're here to continue to support our students, to be those good listeners, to give that good advice and to care for our students. We don't ask our students who they are. We ask them how we can help them be their best. We guide them and support them to be good humans. We acknowledge and thank the board for also supporting all students and voting for that. We support all students. We are SMEA. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Billy, and I'm not gonna say this right, is it Key Kendall? Kirk Kendall, okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Billy Kirkendall and I'm a student at Mission Hills High School. I want to thank the board, cabinet members, as well as Superintendent Dr. Johnson for allowing me to speak tonight. It is, it is an honor to speak about a topic that is essential to the well-being of the entire student body. I under there, I understand there has been concern and controversy in our community around safety and education. Oh, sorry. In our community around how our district supports student safety and inclusion. I want to personally thank the district on behalf of students like me for making safety and education a number one priority. Here are some important facts that may help clear up information or misinformation about issues on bathroom policies. Under the California Civil Code 51A, all persons in the state of California are permitted equal accommodations, facilitations, and services on any public business establishments on the basis of sex, race, origin, religion, and disability. This means that schools, as public institutions, must ensure all students have access to comfortable restroom facilities. Creating an environment where students are taught to respect one another's differences is how humanity as a whole will thrive. Another serious issue affecting LGBTQ plus students is discrimination based on gender identity and sexual orientation. Did you know that 56% of California's queer youth reported facing discrimination in the past year alone? As a result, 35% of these kids seriously considered suicide. 35%. These statistics are heartbreaking, yet very real. They show us to keep fighting for compassion, inclusion, and support. I am eternally thankful that we as a school district care about the well-being of all children, especially minorities. Thank you for your time and your commitment to create a safer world for all students. Your efforts are deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Theo Dreyer?
Hello, my name is Theo Dreyer and I would like to thank the board, cabinet leaders, and Superintendent Dr. Johnson for allowing me to speak today. I'm currently a junior at Mission Hills High School. Early into my sophomore year, I finally went through with changing my name at my school. This was absolutely not a decision I took lightly. And I cannot express how valuable it was to me to have my name at my school actually represent who I am. it was to me to have my name at my school actually represent who I am. Likewise, I'm so grateful that I was able to find safety and community at my school when I didn't feel elsewhere, feel safe elsewhere due to my queer identity. Furthermore, I think it's extremely important for all students to have their school remain a safe place, especially if they feel unsafe in other aspects of their lives. To really demonstrate this point, the Trevor Project found that LGBTQ plus young people are less likely to attempt suicide when they have access to affirming spaces. Overall, queer students deserve inclusive spaces where they are able to learn in a safe environment, just like any other student. That's why current policies on discrimination in schools have been so important and why it's crucial to maintain them as a community and an educational board. Thank you for continuing to protect all students.
Thank you.
Kristen Weaver?
Late March, the Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, that's at the federal level, announced an investigation into a school district whose board meeting is occurring right now. A mother had filed a civil rights complaint with the Justice Department after reporting what had happened to her daughter. She was told, and I quote, "The district and the Board are united with our leaders and educators on this issue and have a shared commitment to upholding the law," end quote. A criminal referral has now been made two days ago against the Deerfield School District in Illinois. The same violations that they are accused of committing and being investigated at have also occurred in our school district at the same middle school level. Stephanie Turner was black-hearted last week for refusing to submit to orders by a male official in a fencing tournament, USA Fencing. They're now under a state and federal investigation. One week, one week ago. And by the way, two men are now competing for the men, for the women's title. George Wallace, the governor, yeah, at that state, said he was just following state law by physically blocking the door. Federal government won that one, didn't they? Ask him how that worked out. But why don't we ask Sonia Shaw of Chino, what happens when your board finds the courage to stand up to do not what is easy, but what is right, what is true, what is good? You win against the California Attorney General and the State Superintendent of Education. And I respect all people, regardless of their race, gender identity. If you're 18, do whatever. You have that right. I believe that in my soul. I have, since I was the kid in middle school, who was bullied. I know what it's like. I know what it's like. And I've been bullied for saying, you know, this is not something I'm comfortable with. And I'm being tired of being called terrific names for seeking out for girls and women. I stand for Stephanie Turner and for Kim Russell, who was fired for saying no, and for Brooke Slusser, and for Paula, and for Riley, and for all of the girls that are being told, shut up, take it, be quiet, and just go down the hall and change if you're not comfortable. How is that equity? And the federal government is investigating California. I'm just saying. Will you be next? Thank you.
Thank you.
As well? All right. Well, thank you again. I will make this shorter because I have not reviewed the sexual education policy. My time is not going. Is my turn? Okay. Thank you. I want to be respectful of everybody's time and of the Board. I have not had a chance to review this in full, so I will just piggyback on that. From what I see, that's in violation of Megan's Law. And after the board meeting two months ago, the last time I stood before you respectfully, and I showed and told 20 friends of mine, 20 mothers, what was happening in the school district, they are all looking to transfer out, homeschool, and go to other places, other states, in fact. How much are we going to do this and affect the, we'll do whatever we want. These are girls and boys, and everybody deserves, yes, to be safe and respected and loved and the right to an education. I have spent the last two decades of my life doing that. I was trained in downtown Seattle for crying out loud. I have given my heart and my career. I don't know how much longer I can do it in this state. Because I have to sit through trainings and be told what a horrible person I am. And God forbid, I never had children. I wanted them, and I never was able to. But God forbid if I had a daughter and I look at my five-year-old friends, my 10-year-old friends, and my 16-year-old friends, and what they're being told to sit back and take? When Mrs. Atwood, when I was seven, said if a boy touches you or makes you feel improperly or comes in to your restroom, tell us. But now it's, just take it, be quiet. And if we aren't going to inform parents about sex offenders, because that's how it sure seems, we need clarification on that. I promise you, I will do everything in my power to tell every single parent I know, and I know thousands of them. Not in my official capacity. I have thousands of friends because I have lived here for decades now. And they were shocked to find out what was happening in this district. They said that cannot be possible. And I called up your resolutions. And I said, why don't you ask your neighbors? And you know what? Stephanie Turner kneeled. Stephanie Turner kneeled. And we're done. We are done. We will not be bullied anymore because nobody deserves to be bullied. Not our queer students, not our women, not our men, not our boys, not our girls. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for item 10.8, allegedly, Adra, the two, these last two. And Adra, I will just have you go through your other speaker cards too after you're done as well. Okay. Yes.
While she's doing that, I just wanted to, to our last speaker, I was following your comments. I heard, I heard references to several other states and school districts. I just want to be clear that if there is a particular complaint about anything specific in our district, I want to make sure you get in touch with our, our HR Assistant Superintendent. Okay, so we can follow up. Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's only safe if you agree with what's going on. So if you disagree with things, it's not acceptable to people. And so that's why people can't feel safe is because if you don't go along, you can't get along. As far as the sexual predator information goes, it's very confusing to me as to why this item is even being brought forward. Makes me question whether or not a pedophile has been hired or has come onto the school campus and the information is attempting to be hidden and circumvented. The fact that, you know, we're even messing with the policy to make it so that the information is hidden if there is like a sexual predator, like if you find an email or social media or whatever it is. I mean, so what happens if that person is contacting students or harassing a teacher or an employee? And that information is then being hidden from the people? Because as according to your Megan's Law policy, it was like, you have to tell people if a visitor is coming 14 days before. And so now it's like, well, we're going to hide that information. That is actually putting people in danger, not only children, but also the employees and teachers. And it's questionable, as like I said, why it's happening now. And what's questionable too is when I came last time to talk about it, and it was really sad that I was the only one talking about it, and I would have been today until I asked her to speak about it. Nobody really knows that this is going on, and as a victim, it's terrifying to me to think about hiding a predator's information to potentially create more victims. And when he addressed you, sir, about whether or not you have mandated reporters and that you are trained to see if somebody is being abused, and that if they are, you would call CPS, which is also terrifying because they are kidnapping children from their families and ripping them apart, putting them in the Polinsky Center, which is abusing children, has been for decades, and there's about 150 cases. So to call them is, is very negligent. But what does that have to do with a sexual predator coming onto the campus? That makes me feel like what you're saying is that if we're going to be hiding this information, a student or somebody could be sexually abused, but good thing you guys are mandated reporters so you could report the abuse to CPS. That has nothing to do with sharing information. So I mean, are we setting people up to be abused, but at least you could report it? I, I just don't understand. And the fact that the sheriff was being very obscure and about the information, like asking, what does this mean as far as the policy goes? They were very not wanting to share information, and that's what's so disturbing, is that we're willing to protect predators over victims.
Dr. Johnson, can you clarify just for the, for these two and for anybody who's, who wants to know what this policy is about? And specifically, we do not have, allow sexual predators onto our campuses?
Correct.
And we do not tell girls not to, to let us know?
Of course.
If they're being abused?
Of course.
Absolutely. This policy is being updated tonight as advised by the California School Boards Association. They advise all school districts statewide to update this policy governing sex offender notifications to align with current law. The district's policy has not been updated since 2005. So as such, it is recommended that the Board adopt the updated policy, model policy from CSBA. The policy is updated to clarify that under California Penal Code 290.45, a district employee to whom sex offender information is disclosed to by law enforcement may only disclose such information when authorized to do so through the law enforcement entity. The district works very closely with law enforcement to ensure a safe school community, and in matters such as this, the district is required by law to defer to direction from law enforcement. The district has been informed that California Penal Code gives law enforcement broad discretion to share a wealth of information about a sex offender with the community. They are allowed to share their name, address, even photographs. However, under a 2019 law, it states that law enforcement may only share internet identifiers with the community in three instances, when they are investigating a sex-related crime, a kidnapping, or human trafficking. So since many school districts, including our school district, partner with law enforcement to provide school resource officers, the California School Boards Association wanted to ensure that school district policies clarify that school district law enforcement and administration must align with Penal Code and have the same, same standards that apply to law enforcement agencies.
When we allow people on our campuses? How do we check?
Yeah, absolutely. So our visitor management system, whenever you walk into one of our schools at the front desk before you're allowed anywhere on campus, you must check in with that system. It's called Identikit. Any visitor must swipe their driver's license through the system. It will automatically pop up to the office staff to identify, and it specifically checks Megan's Law. So it will flag on the screen and notify the school staff that, that person is on the sex offender registry so that would, they would never be allowed on campus.
And I'll just say, with respect to hiring practices, all of our employees are required to finger, do fingerprinting through the DOJ, and maybe you want to discuss that real quick?
Yeah, absolutely. So part of our onboarding process is, as you shared, to do a background check, fingerprint through Department of Justice and FBI clearance for our employees. If an issue comes up during that hiring process of a sexual related offense, and that would preclude somebody from being hired, if there's an issue with a current employee and there's a charge or a conviction that takes place of a sexual nature, then that's a conversation, obviously, that we have at that point as well, and potentially then terminate employment at that time. So.
Would that information be hidden from the public? Unless law enforcement, if law enforcement told you, you can't tell anybody, you're not going to tell anyone.
So, okay, so what you just heard was the, was the Penal Code, and you heard about the DOJ HR code. So I don't, I don't know that I can go through individual examples on, on any matter that you're, that you're talking about. I mean, there would be, they would, we would have called law enforcement.
It should be very easy to answer.
Yeah.
You would tell the public. Or you wouldn't. It's a yes or no. There's no kind of in-between, and that's the problem, is that information is being hidden. And as somebody who is a victim of a predator, for that not to be something that is known, it's very dangerous.
Can I just say, sorry, go ahead.
Well, it's just, it's, it's very scary to think about, that we're going to allow this, that you would want to protect that information from anybody.
Yeah, I, I think, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Susie to start your time for your next comments, and we'll, we'll carry on. I just want to make sure that you understood that this, the board policy that's on the consent agenda for this evening is alignment with penal, with the Penal Code. These aren't rules that we're making up as a school district. These are, these are board policies that are, that are, we are required to align to Penal Code. So that's why they're there.
It's very disturbing to see that nobody's willing to stand up for what's right. Everyone wants to just comply with whatever's going on. And your attitude is crazy because I'm asking questions that are very reasonable.
Can I just say that in the background, in closed session, we address these, and believe me, we, we, we have generative questions that address some of those issues that you're talking about. And if my colleagues are in disagreement with me about what I'm telling you, it's like, we think about a lot of different things to address that. So just know that we do appreciate your comments and for sharing your life story with us. Your, your testament to resiliency, your testament to be the courage for those voices. I mean, I appreciate that. I really do. But my point though is that we do ask those generative questions behind closed doors.
But it should be in front of everyone. It shouldn't, that's the problem, is everyone wants to do things behind closed doors. Nobody wants to be transparent. And that's an issue because even like what I was saying, it's, I'm asking about what's going on, and you're talking about mandated reporters and, and reporting sexual abuse. I'm talking about sharing information for a predator. So I, I understand that. But this is more important to me because it's sad to see how people want to be a gatekeeper to information, especially with a predator. And it's like, you're talking about safety for all. I mean, those are just words. Because I can speak louder than words.
Well, I'm really glad Megan's Law, as you said Megan's Law, who's there, but yeah.
Right, but you're still engaged in hiding information, and that's disturbing because even if a law enforcement officer told me not to tell my neighbors that there was a sexual predator in the neighborhood, you think I would abide by that? That's the problem, is everyone acts like their hands are tied and, oh, I gotta do it. No, you don't. It's a choice. Everyone has a choice as to what they do. And it's a disservice to children or anybody that could be a potential victim to just go, well, I'm being told to do it. Right? I mean, because you're, it's just, it is insane that this is even something that we're talking about and that you guys are so irritated by me asking you these questions, not you necessarily, but the him and her. And you can laugh about it all you want, but until you're a victim, maybe you should stop and think about what it would be like if that was your child. It's a problem because nobody wants to talk about the real serious stuff, and that's why everything is going to shit in the world. Is because we're still, like, letting people push us around and say, if you don't agree with this, oh, well, then you're not welcome. But we want to make everybody feel welcome, but that's only if you agree with what's being said. And it takes a lot to stand in the gap for people. And I'm damn proud that I can. And I'm damn proud that I can do that because I don't want other victims to come forward and to have to go through the same stuff. And if I could save one victim, then great. But I would like to make it so that there are no more. Not that we're just doing things because it feels good, because you're welcome in the community, because you're going along with the insanity. There are not a million genders. It's male and female.
She's four cards.
So it's very disturbing that even people can identify as a cat and we're going to give them a litter box to go to the bathroom in and say that that's okay. That we're going to, you know, talk about wellness and different things of children and do wellness visits at home. That's very terrifying to think about. Because are they equipped to actually do a wellness visit? And if something doesn't look right at home, do we call CPS so that then those kids get kidnapped? Because I have a friend whose children were kidnapped and right now they're at the hospital because the caretaker, they're not sure if her little three-year-old whose vagina is swollen and red was because of the caretakers that they were put in their care. It is so sad to see that people are like, children are our future, are they? Nobody seems to care enough to make sure the children are being traumatized and abused. But what we are willing to do is protect predators on a massive scale. And that should show you that what is going on is not right. And the fact that you guys can look yourself in the mirror and be like, I'm doing a good job making sure everyone's safe while I tell girls they don't matter. You're only safe if you agree with what's going on. You're only safe if you are comfortable changing in front of a boy. If you're not, it's not up to us to make you safe, right? It's very appalling. And it's like, what is a victim? Like what's a victim? Do we know? Because it's like, we're creating them all the time, right? But we're saying they're a victim, but you're not a victim. And how can we arbitrarily decide that? Yes, everyone should feel welcome, but we shouldn't do it at the cost of another human being. So if you have kids who want to, who identify as another sex, give them a whole other bathroom. But don't force them into the girls restroom or locker rooms to change with them if they feel unsafe. Because that other person feels unsafe going into the men's room. So it's like, well, we're not going to make you do that, but you're going to force girls to capitulate. And if not, then go down the hall. What is that telling them? It's telling them they don't matter. And then you say, safety for all, and that's just words. Because you're dismissing victims.
Okay, that's, that's what I have for 10.13.
10.1.
Sorry, your last card is 10.18.
18.
Yes, I just wanted to.
Did we already do 9.4?
Yeah, I had to start the timer.
That's fine.
I just wanted to give you where you're at.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So Workplace Violent Prevention Plan. This makes me think about when you guys are saying that you're going to protect kids and then we have sexual harassment going on with teachers, which bleeds into kind of sexually harassing kids if there's cookies that are made into penises, right? Things like that. And where teachers can sit there and make, like come forward and say, I'm being sexually harassed and nothing happens for years. Like it'll take years for something to happen. So if you can't protect from violence in the workplace, and I would consider that violence, then how can we trust that you're going to protect kids? You know what I'm saying? It's like, everything's kind of just pushed back. I mean, we should be in a place where it's like, if you are having trouble, it should be addressed immediately. It shouldn't be like, well, we'll wait a few years and then like, you know, let the kids be engaged with these penis cookies and, you know, just watching it happen. It just, it's very sad. And there are actually students who are of the LGBTQ community who do harass the children that are not, telling them to go kill themselves. Why don't you just go kill yourself? You know what I mean? It's good. So it goes both ways. We want to act like it's only one way or this way, and that's not the case. And I just, it's sad to see that, you know, like peers can do that to each other and it's accepted. And I don't know that there is a safe place. Like if you're not going along with the agenda, do you really feel safe going and talking to social workers that are encouraging the confusion and encouraging boys to be girls when they never will be? And if you feel unsafe with someone like that, how do you feel safe going and telling your own counselor if what they're doing is trying to make sure that this group feels safe, but this one doesn't? So, you know, I hope that you guys can really like search your hearts and your souls and think about the decisions that you're making. And why you have to give such nasty looks. And you can't even speak into your mic. It's like, nobody can hear you. You don't care. You have this attitude and it's sad. Because it's like, children should matter enough to you that you'll do anything to stand in the gap. Not just go along with some agenda that's being pushed down the pipe. You have a choice and you will be rewarded or punished for your choices. So it's up to you on what you do with that. Because I don't want to meet our maker and be like, oh, yeah, I was encouraging the abuse of children and the protection of predators. So Godspeed.
Thank you.
Ricky? Kendall? Sorry, I can't say it. What, how do I say it? Kirkendall. Kirkendall. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, school board member, Dr. Johnson, cabinet leaders. My name is Ricky Kirkendall. For those that don't know me, I've been an ed specialist with our amazing district for 19 years. And I'm here to express some concerns that are rising in the specialized community because our district is shifting to remove all specialized academic courses in middle school and high school. So it's happened at Santa Lejo and they're slowly trying to roll it out. It's already happened at San Marcos High School as well. So, sorry. This change has been promoted as inclusion and even ideal. But when I speak to district staff members, other teachers, I hear that we're failing many students. Because frankly, some of those students need a different placement and they're not getting it. Teachers are worried, students are struggling, and parents are often left out of the conversation completely, simply presented with only the co-taught model at an IEP meeting. Right now, we have some high school students that were given SAI classes that are now mainstreamed fully in a co-taught class, comprehending reading at a first to third grade level. And because of their multiple complex disabilities, they're being asked to be mainstreamed. And the education specialists in those courses supporting, usually support 10 to 15 students that are mild, are now expected to support those same 10 or 15 plus a core of like maybe three or four more that really have extensive needs. And so with that gap, they're not able to reach all the kids and help all of them learn and get their high school units. And so these kids are failing. Emotionally, many of these students, what we're noticing is there's actually a decrease in discourse. They're speaking less because they try to stay under the radar in those classes and not be noticed. Many feel like failures and they're labeled themselves as dumb. So how is this really best for kids? This new model not only isn't individualized at all, it's not an IEP, which is what it was meant to be. So when district leaders decided that co-taught was best for all kids without speaking to students or staff, their unique needs are often unmet now. And when they struggle, as many are starting to really show up as strugglers, there's no other option for them. With the new model, you either stay in the co-taught classes and fail or we change everything and you're not doing much, but you're just going to get a pass. And/or fail for years and then the other alternative extensive is extensive needs. This is not how inclusion should work. Inclusion means meeting students where they are, not placing them into a structure that appears equal on surface, but fails at practice. So I implore all of you to not take the narrative that specialized leadership will give you. Please take time to speak directly to teachers, parents, and students. Listen to their lived experiences, hear what's really happening on campuses. We all want what's best for students, but doing what's best requires honest dialogue, accountability, and the willingness to admit when something isn't working for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell. Go ahead, I think.
Yeah, you go. I was just going to ask if we could get a report on this.
Thank you.
What the, yeah. Thanks.
Madison Evans? I have three, I think three of you on the same topic. Brianna, Barbie, and Madison. Barbie, okay.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time. I know we're getting into the late hour. I'm Barbie Morgan. I am here on behalf of my daughter Grace Morgan, who is a junior at San Marcos High School. And on behalf of our entire cheer team and on behalf of Coach Heather Janiak. And I just wanted to say for all of our athletes in the program at San Marcos High School, the firing of Heather Janiak has really hurt us. I know it's only been a couple of weeks, but we're still in the middle of our stunt season. And that decision so abruptly after she's done so much for our program is really unfortunate. If there's anything I can do to have that changed, I would gladly. The communication around this decision has been handled very poorly. The parents have just been told that there's a change in direction. And when Heather came onboard three years ago as our freshman coach and then pretty much had it dropped on her to be our head coach, she's done nothing but step up for our entire program. She has shown that inclusivity is a priority to her. My daughter is on a 504 plan. I know that there has been a parent that stood here in November and made false accusations about Ms. Janiak not being inclusive to a child that was on an IEP program. My daughter wrote a letter that I forwarded to you, Dr. Johnson, and to you, Dr. Campbell. I hope you had the time to read it this morning in addition to the letter that I wrote a couple of weeks ago. And I think Grace did a phenomenal job, a very heartfelt job in outlining what her coach has done for her. And I hope that that is truly taken to heart, not just for Grace, but for over 60 athletes that we have on our team. And this loss is going to be significant. She elevated our program. She didn't just step in and take over. She elevated it for our sideline cheer program, for our competition program, and then with stunt this year. She encouraged community events for our girls. She has shown tremendous leadership. And she opened the door for athletes with the stunt program to pursue some different avenues with college. The parents and the athletes from this program are devastated and I think I can speak to that. We have other parents in the room tonight and the ones that have also written letters. There really has been no explanation. She is there for our athletes, not only their physical safety, but their mental wellbeing. And I think a coach and an educator that truly cares and gives their heart, as she has done for three years, and to have no explanation why she is no longer the coach is unfair to her and it is unfair to our athletes. In closing, I'd just like to recognize that she has led with tremendous integrity. I am forever grateful and I really hope that you look at the leadership at San Marcos High School, mainly the athletic director and the principal and how this was all handled. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Either Brianna or Madison?
I wrote notes before I came because I have a hard time with public speaking. My name is Brianna Batanzos and I'm here tonight not just as a parent who's heartbroken and outraged over the dismissal of Coach Heather from San Marcos High School, but as someone who has witnessed firsthand the positive impact she had on our cheer program and more importantly, our kids. My daughter, who is on an IEP, has been on the cheer program for three years. When my daughter started high school, she had never cheered before. She's grown tremendously. Not only is she on the varsity cheer team, but she's been proud to represent the school on their competition team. This growth not only came from my daughter and her commitment and hard work, but from the great coaching given to her by Coach Heather. Since my daughter's freshman year, she is now a junior, this program has gone through nine cheer coaches. The only constant from the start was Coach Heather. She showed up, she stayed, she built something real, something strong, something inclusive that was meaningful to our students. Her leadership created a team where kids feel valued and motivated to grow, regardless of their learning backgrounds. Removing Coach Heather sends a wrong message to our kids. That people who stand by them and help them grow can be taken away without listening to the full story. It's a devastating message to students and families who finally felt like they had someone in their corner. It's a mistake and it's wrong. Our kids deserve better than instability in politics. They deserve coaches who care, show up, and who fight for them. And that's exactly who Coach Heather is. Our athletes are asking for their coach that has been taken from them without any explanation. The only coach that has been their support and constant from the beginning, that has made a lasting impact. I urge you to not ignore the voices of the families who have witnessed Coach Heather's dedication and impact firsthand. Please listen not to just complaints, but to the truth. This coach has changed lives. She's certainly changed my daughters and she deserves to be treated with fairness and respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madison Evans?
Hello, everybody. My name is Maddie. I go to San Marcos High School. I'm a current junior. I didn't write any notes. I just wanted to make this short and sweet. So I am a member and I have been a member of the San Marcos High School Cheer Program. And Heather was just an amazing coach to us and really helped everybody grow in not only their skills, but their leadership skills. Being a cheerleader is really about involvement in the school. And the fact that, well, what we've been told is that it has involvement with what the parent came here to say about her child and how she wasn't very involved in the program. And I just wanted to firsthand talk about that because the child is one, I tried to get to know her. She is so sweet. And we tried our very hardest. Obviously, she had impaired cognitive functions and in her community, it's hard for people like her to be involved in programs. And I know this has been brought up. So we wanted to make sure that we gave her every opportunity to be involved in this program. And we would play games with her at the beginning of practice. She was involved in our sideline cheers. She was involved with dances if she would like. The only thing she wasn't involved with was stunting. I don't know if you guys are familiar with cheer, but stunting is when you are seriously holding other people up in the air. And obviously, there are very like, there's consequences. We have strict rules of people when you fall because obviously you're not going to hit a stunt every time it goes up. So we just didn't want to put her in any position, especially with her, just, you know, what she's been given. If she has impaired cognitive functions, obviously we didn't want to put her life or other lives at stake. I know I did research on this. It's like 65 or something percent, very high number of all injuries or female injuries in a sport comes from cheerleading. A major one being concussions. And concussions are a really serious injury. It can lead to brain damage, especially if you have multiple. It leads to, you know, impaired cognitive, obviously. So we just didn't want to put her in any position where it could hurt others or herself. And upon learning like this, Heather, our coach, she obviously wanted to include her more because the parent came here and said that she wasn't very included. So we would play games with her and just everything to make her feel like that. So I just didn't understand how that was a reason for Coach Heather to be fired, so. So, yeah, we just really want our coach back. She's made such a positive impact, so thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers.
Next, we have reports by board members. Does anyone have anything they would like to report? Thank you. I look forward to Monday. I think Monday at the California Center for the Arts is an event for music for all the school-wide districts. I look forward to going to that personally. Excuse me. Action item nine point one. Publicly hearing, public hearing to hear comments from the public regarding the financial provisions of the collective bargaining agreement between the San Marcos Unified School District and San Marcos Educators Association SMEA regarding seventh period at La Mirada Academy. Erin?
So on tonight's agenda, the board will consider approval of an MOU with SMEA. And the government code requires school district to publicly disclose the provisions of any bargaining agreement, including the costs that will be incurred prior to considering its approval. We estimate that the MOU regarding middle school seventh period at La Mirada Academy will cost approximately $30,000 and impacts the next year's twenty-five, twenty-six budget only because this MOU is in effect for one year only.
This public hearing is now open. Suzie, is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding the public hearing? This public hearing?
There are no speakers on the public hearing.
This public hearing is now closed. Nine point two. Disclosure of collective bargaining agreements of the San Marcos Unified School District and the San Marcos Educators Association regarding seventh period at La Mirada Academy. Erin?
To comply with the government code, documents have been prepared that disclose the costs of this agreement, and the disclosures were provided to the San Diego County Office of Education for their review as required.
I have a motion to approve the disclosure of collective bargaining agreements of the San Marcos Unified School District and SMEA. Moved by Member Herrick, and seconded by Member Carlson to approve the disclosure as presented. Student board members, please say your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine point three. Memorandum of Understanding with the San Marcos Educators Association, La Mirada Academy, Seventh Period Day. Joel, Dr. Garcia?
Yes, board members, with an increase from a six-period student day to a seven-period student day, teachers teach six periods instead of five. This means that students have more core selective options, which of course is a good thing for students. It also means, however, that teachers would get less prep time. This MOU helps mitigate that by agreeing to a total of four prep days throughout the school year for middle school teachers. And so this is an MOU that we signed with SMEA, and this is an action item with a recommendation to approve the MOU as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the San Marcos Unified School District and SMEA?
So moved.
Moved by, I apologize, who was that? Moved by Member Mium, seconded by Member Carlson to approve the MOU as presented. Student board representatives, please say your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point four. Declaration of Need of Fully Qualified Educators. Dr. Garcia?
Yes, board members, on an annual basis, the board is required to approve a declaration of need for fully qualified educators prior to staff submitting it to the Commission on Teacher Credentialing or the CTC. Doing so allows a district, when absolutely necessary, to hire teachers who require an interim credential while they complete the additional credentialing requirements. Having this flexibility is important, especially in our identified areas of high need, which those being special education, and in certain years, math and science. This is an action item with a recommendation to approve the declaration of need as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators? Moved by Member Carlson, seconded by Member Herrick to approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators as presented. Student board representatives, please say your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Nine point five. Appointment of representative to the San Diego County Educational Facility Authority, number two. Doctor, I mean, sorry.
Yeah, this facility authority, number two, is the board that governs the operations of the North County Regional Education Center, this facility that we are in. The facility's authority consists of representatives from the San Diego County Office of Education and the San Marcos Unified School District. Tonight, it's necessary to appoint a board member to serve as a director, positioned through June thirtieth of 2026. That's a two-year commitment. Board member Andres Martin currently serves as the alternate director. The facility's authority typically just meets once per year to review the agreement we have in place and to approve the budget related to the operations of this facility. So the next in-person meeting for this facility's authority will take place on Friday, May thirtieth, at 1:00 PM in the business services conference room upstairs. So we do need someone that's available during the day. I'm sorry about that.
What if we happen to be out of town this time, like May thirtieth?
Well, then you just.
It is a Wednesday.
Oh, it is?
Oh, no, sorry. Sorry, my apologies. I'm looking at April. It is a Friday. I could see if I could take some time off work, if nobody else.
I could, I'm fine to do it usually. I just can't do it that one. Sorry.
Well, if you want to stay the alternate, then you would do it this time.
Is that okay?
You could stay out to be the alternate. Yeah, so I'll go ahead and nominate myself, I guess.
Well, do you want to be the alternate, and you'll go on the thirtieth? You'll go this time, but I can do it the rest of the two years.
Right.
So you'll stay alternate?
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, okay, that works.
Thank you. Yeah. So I'm making the nomination for Member Mium to become our representative. Do I have a motion to approve the declaration? Oh, no, sorry, my apologies. So I have a motion to approve the, thank you, Representative San Diego County Educational Facilities Authority, number two. Thank you. I made the motion, seconded by Member Carlson, to nominate Member Mium as the SDCEFA representative. Student board members, please say your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, nine point six. Appoint Citizen Bond Oversight Committee Members. Erin?
Okay, so after the passage of the Measure JJ Bond, a measure in November of 2024, the board is now required to establish a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee pursuant to the requirements of the Strict Accountability in Local School Construction Bonds Act that's in the education code. The purpose of the Oversight Committee shall be to inform the public concerning the expenditure of bond funds and to ensure that the funds are appropriately spent on projects listed in the ballot measure. The Oversight Committee will meet quarterly, and staff will present bond expenditure reports, and facility staff will review construction project progress on each of the projects. The committee will also review the Measure JJ Audit Report, which will be conducted by an independent audit firm hired by the board. And they will publish an annual report of the Oversight Committee's activities that will be presented to the board and be available to the community. The district solicited volunteers from the community to serve on this committee through an application process. And we want to sincerely thank the twenty-three community members who applied for their willingness to serve on this very important committee. For those that we are not able to appoint to the committee right now, we will keep those applications on file, and we may be reaching out to them again in the future in the event that we have a vacancy on the committee. Appointed committee members will serve for a two-year term and can be reappointed for up to three consecutive terms. And we expect this committee to operate until the last bond dollar is spent, which will likely take up to ten years. So we anticipate many more community members will have an opportunity to serve on the committee over the life of the bond. An internal review committee, which was comprised of myself, Executive Director of Facilities, Tova Corman, our Public Information Officer, Amy Ventatulo, and my administrative assistant, Lisette Michelle. This internal committee met and has confirmed that the required membership criteria has been met and is recommending appointment of the following six individuals to serve on the Oversight Committee. Eric Hall, Robert Redfield, Vanessa Smith, Jamie Chamberlain, Stephen Kildue, and Paul Soss. No applications were received from anyone from a bona fide taxpayers' association. So it's our recommendation at this time that that position remain vacant, and the district will continue looking for ways to fill that particular position. In addition, it's recommended that the board appoint Eric Hall to serve as the committee chairperson for this initial formation of the committee. And the first meeting of the Bond Oversight Committee will take place on Tuesday, May thirteenth, at 3:30 at the district office.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item?
I had some, some just questions to go through. I guess I've talked to Andy about it, but I have, the recruiter in me is very hard to, like, say that I know this is the best group when I don't know, I didn't see any applicants. I didn't see any applications. I understand it's a staff thing to review. But it's challenging for me to say that I know that that's the best. And so what I have to go off of is school affiliation for the parents specifically. And I think that it would benefit us to have parents from the schools that are gonna be under construction and phase one. So there's some, the two parents that are on this list are high school, I guess she's a middle school and high school, but the majority of the schools that are gonna be going through this project are elementary. But there's Nob Hill, Woodland Park, and Paloma. So my, my request would be to sub out either Jamie or Vanessa for Stephanie Carroll. She's the one I thought of because of, she's Woodland Park and Twin Oaks.
I think that Vanessa Smith and Jamie Chamberlain worked really hard on the Prop JJ campaign to get the bond passed. And if anybody deserves to be on that committee, they do. Also, Robert Redfield worked very hard as parent volunteers to get the bond passed. And so those three, I think, out of anybody that applied, have my, my full support because they actually worked to help, to help get this through. So I would not be in favor of swapping them up.
I think we have a different view of oversight. If the point of it is to meet quarterly review construction projects, there's a benefit to having someone that their kids attend that school, more so than someone that just really wanted the bond. I appreciate the help that they did on it to get it here, but we're already here. So I don't think it's a congratulations, here you to be on this Oversight Committee. I think there's a purpose for it, and you want to make sure you have the people that have the best skills. So that's.
Well, the committee is really there just to make sure that what was put into the bond is what we're doing. They're not putting, giving input on architectural drawings or paint colors or, or, you know, landscaping or anything. They're literally there just to, you know, as, as we're going along to say, okay, well, here's how much we said we were gonna spend. Did we spend it on the things we said we were gonna spend it on? So I think that the scope is, is maybe different than what you're thinking it is.
Oh, Erin said to review construction projects, like the progress of the projects.
They'll be reviewing them just so they're aware of what the progress is, but their goal, their, their role really is to look at the expenditure. So that's the main thing. We'll be sharing expenditure reports for each project. And so we'll just show, like, we'll be showing the expenditures for Woodland Park. And so they're just, they're, they're there to see what, make sure that we're spending it on that particular school. And only for construction purposes, not on salaries and things like that.
Of course.
So although I do appreciate your points, in terms of the SCBOC, this committee is formed, this is law? Or how is this committee for your role by the district? How is that?
Yeah, so, so we are required to have this, and we do need to appoint members to this committee tonight because under the education code, we have sixty days from the point that the, just that the board certified the election results. So that happened, that took place on February thirteenth. So our sixty-day timeline to appoint members to serve on the committee is up on Monday, April fourteenth. So we do need to appoint members tonight. Really, the only requirement is that we have seven total members, and then there are five specific roles that they must be eligible for. Okay? And so that is the business organization, the senior citizen organization, a parent of a student currently enrolled and active in a PTO. That, that particular individual is Robert Redfield, a parent of a student currently enrolled, and then we can have the two at-large members. So, so the, the particular category that you're discussing is, is parents, right? And so those, you know, could, could be any, could be any parent. So.
Is there any?
Different individual than the three that the, our internal committee is recommending.
Is there any sort of waiver that we could waive the vacant spot under the taxpayer organization to request and say, hey, can we add one more parent?
Yes, so, yes, I'm glad you asked that. That, that is, so what, what the board could do tonight is add, except the, the six members that were recommended, and you could add a seventh one as well. That could be an option. And then what we'd do at the first committee meeting is we'd ask if anyone on the, of those parent members or the, or the at-large members would be willing to become a member of a taxpayers' association. So did a little bit of research to become a member of the San Diego County Taxpayers Association, which is the one we prefer, is ninety-nine dollars a year. You could, they could also become a member of Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, which is from California, where that one's only fifteen dollars a year. And then the Taxpayers United of America is a twenty-five dollar a year. So we, we could ask, if we, if the board would like to appoint a seventh member, we could ask if somebody would be willing to do that. So that's as well.
I personally feel comfortable, comfortable with that. I, I mean, I don't know Stephanie Carroll personally, but I've engaged, interacted with her in the past. And I mean, I think she would be a wonderful parent with excellent input, if we could do that, if she joined the, I mean, I'm not one to tell her to do what to do, but I think that's a wonderful suggestion, personally.
Do we have alternates? When I was on the Prop K committee, I was an alternate.
Yeah, so, so when the committee met, we did, like, kind of pencil in a few alternates because, just in case, because then I called everyone because it had been a couple of months since they actually submitted their applications. So I called to make sure that they were all still interested in it. In our case, they were. But we did kind of just tag a few names as, as alternates based on their applications, so share that information.
So if we're required to have seven people, and we've got to do this tonight, but we don't have our taxpayer person?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, because it's, it's common, actually, to have a vacancy on your bond oversight committee because people, you know, their life's changed and they can't participate anymore sometimes. So, so under the bylaws when we meet, it just has to be a quorum of the members that we have at that time. So, so it could just be six or even five, and then we would just meet, make sure that a quorum of the appointed members were present to conduct a meeting.
See if I could say this right. How would we be able to contact Ms. Carol? And maybe follow up with that. Or is she even an alternate? I don't. I mean, I don't know how to ask that.
Well, I think it was going to be proposed to all three of them.
Okay.
If any of them would be open to it. Great.
Sorry, sorry. I'm not sure I understood that. A propose to all three of which
that were that are that qualify as under the parent group to see if any of them would be open to doing this tax thing.
Or the or the or it could be the two at-at-large members. The other at-large member could do it as well.
I think that's fair. I mean, I think they both raised great points. Not to bring up the Creo thing, but those parents have strong feelings about what's going on at their school and I think it's important to be able to have parent representation when you're discussing what's going on at your school. And it sounds like these other two ladies were super involved in advocating for it. I think that seems fair and reasonable to have them all join and then see which one of them is willing to do the taxpayer thing.
So if I'm I'm tracking as you as you're deliberating, I think what I'm hearing is that the board is considering or recommending accepting the six that are before you this evening and then adding Stephanie Carroll to the as a seventh, which means you would have to get in touch with her and see if she's still willing to to serve. And if she is, then you've got seven.
And if she wasn't for some reason, we could select someone else and we could bring that back to the the May board meeting as well.
And then you've got your seven. And then of those seven, your first conversation is
We will ask if one of them is willing to volunteer to become part of a taxpayers'
Am I hearing that? I just want to make sure I'm hearing that right by common consent.
Okay, that too. Great. Do I have a motion to appoint the following? I'll put in your words, six.
We're we're pointing seven.
Seven. Representatives for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Moved by Member Herrick and seconded by Member Carlson to appoint those just named as a representative representatives for the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. Student Board Members, please say your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. I just want to apologize. I had to take a phone call because my mom was calling me my well, I'm I'm a single parent this week as my wife is on vacation. So I apologize for taking that phone call. Consent Agenda ten. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for discussion purposes? Moved by Member Mium.
Nope.
Oh, sorry, Carlson. Seconded by Member Mium to approve the consent agenda for discussion purposes. Are is there any discussion? Okay, thank you. Student Board Representatives. Oh, wait. Moved by Carlson, seconded by Mium. School Student Board Representatives, please say your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
You. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number eleven, Information Agenda. Revisions to existing governing board policies, B P three, three, one, one. B I D S, B P. Oh, bids. Oh, sorry. B P three, three, one, one point one, Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting and Board Policy three, five, eight, zero, District Records. Aaron?
Okay, the bids policy is being updated to clarify that bidding procedures are required to be established in accordance with and meet the requirements for bidding procedures specified in law. Additionally, the policy is updated to incorporate material from the accompanying administrative regulation related to awarding contracts and instances when bids are not required because the majority of that content is related to governing board actions and therefore more appropriately placed in the board policy. The Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Policy is being updated to add language related to author authorization by the governing board to declare that a project can be performed more economically by employees of the district when after the first invitation of bids pursuant to informal or formal bidding procedures under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, all bids are rejected. And then finally, the District Records Board Policy is being updated to include protection of records against damage, loss, or theft which may be caused by cybersecurity breaches. Additionally, policy is being updated to require the superintendent or designee to do two things. One, ensure that the employees receive information and training about cybersecurity, including ways to protect district records from breaches to the digitals districts digital infrastructure, which we we do that training, by the way. And second, to report cyber attack that impacts more than five hundred students or personnel to the newly established California Cybersecurity Integration Center. In addition, the policy is updated to clarify that if a breach in security of district records has resulted in the release of personal information, the superintendent or designee is required to notify individuals in a very specific manner.
Eleven point two, College and Career Access Pathways, C C. Cap. Dual Enrollment Partnership Agreement with Palomar Community College, July first, two thousand and twenty-five to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight. Dr. Campbell?
Good evening, Board Members. Tonight I will bring forward to you our updated renewal agreement for our C cap. So just to give you a little background, the College and Career Access Pathways, or C cap, was established with A B two eighty-eight as well as is now established in Education Code seventy-six, zero, zero, four. And the goal of the C cap is to expand dual enrollment opportunities for our high school students. And I next slide, I will tell you specifically what dual enrollment is. But with these opportunities, really, the focus is on increasing C T E. Education and preparation for transfer for students, improving high school graduation rates, and also helping students achieve color and college and career readiness. So dual enrollment, I like to clarify the difference between dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment. So dual enrollment is when high school students take college courses. They are taught by college professors. They are college courses, but they are taken on their high school campus. Students receive both S M U S D. Credit and Palomar transcript and Palomar transcript credit. I put that weighted in parentheses because our dual enrollment courses are college courses. So like an A P. Course that receives a weighted score, a weight five out of four credits. A dual enrollment course as well receives five out of four. Tuition is free with our dual enrollment courses and the district covers cost of course materials. So you may hear that students also can take courses for free at Palomar, just any courses. That is concurrent enrollment. So a student who goes to Palomar, picks their own course, just goes into a regular Palomar course. And they don't have to pay the Palomar course fee. However, they do have to do their own course materials, and that is not in agreement with the school district. So with our C cap agreement, the dual enrollment courses that are offered have to be agreed upon by both our school district and with Palomar. So this year or this upcoming year, these are the courses that will be offered. Introduction to to Criminal Justice in the Fall Semester. This is a course that is for that is part of an associate degree for transfer pathway. And the next three are part of Cal Getzy, which is the California General Education Transfer Curriculum, meaning that these are courses that can be used for transfer to C S U. Or C S. Or to U C. Those courses are the Art of Cinema, United States History from a Chicano Perspective, and Principles of Economics. The next three are part of a Palomar H VAC Certification Program. We are offering three of the six courses that students are able to take for a work-ready certificate. And these are all part of H VAC. And we piloted this program with our Twin Oaks students. They loved it. And so we are happy that we are able to now bring it to our other high school, high schools as well. So it will be offered in the fall at Mission Hills as well as at Twin Oaks. And then we have two courses that are for college credit. Cooperative Education, which basically is workforce and supervision of going into the workforce, work experience. And then College Success. So taught by college counselors, helping students get through or learn about how to get through college successfully, time management, how to take a test, that sort of thing. In the spring semester, we bring forth Criminal Law, Introduction to Law, and Legal Ethics. All three are part of the Law Society and Public Policy Associate Degree. And Art of Cinema, Introduction to Art, and Principles of Economics, and Chicano Perspective, History from a Chicano Perspective, the second course of that. And then Cooperative Education, again, work experience as well as managing stress and well-being with the focus of how do you manage your stress and well-being as a college student? And so our C cap agreement steps, it does follow a very kind of structured way it is presented to you. So it's presented to you in April as an informational item. It comes back to you for approval in May. And then the same C cap agreement goes to the Palomar Board where they also have to have the same process. They receive it for information, they approve it. And and then it is approved fully. Every year, there is an addendum that is added to the C cap with new courses or changes in courses. So you will hear about those each year if we change the courses. I am open for questions.
Okay, I have questions. Sorry. So are these the only classes offered in this? Or is this are these the new classes offered in this?
These are the only courses that will be offered for dual enrollment.
Okay, gotcha. And are they the curriculum is? Does the curriculum come from Palomar to one of our teachers? So that's kind of how
They are Palomar courses.
At the Palomar, okay. Gotcha. On campus, on high school. Gotcha. Okay.
When it comes to our bargaining units, how does that pan out?
We have a dual enrollment committee actually that works closely with our that works with our labor partners. And so they go through the courses, they agree on the courses, and these are the courses that come.
And then I'm really glad that it's reflective, the Cal G Getzy versus I Getzy, and this is very up to date, very new. So I'm really glad to see that as well.
Yeah, I just had a question. So you mentioned it's tuition-free for the students. How is the how are these funded? How are the?
California actually has a one of their goals is to increase dual enrollment. So it is free for K through twelve, K through twelve. You don't have a lot of K's in. But it is it is free for students who are in K through twelve. And so even my daughter, who did a concurrent enrollment course, she was able to go. That fee is waived. That forty-seven-dollar credit fee is waived, but she we still have to pay for the other pieces.
Per unit, per
Per unit. Per unit. And the courses, the courses, the instructional materials for the courses, we receive a dual enrollment grant that we are able to pay for. We are able to pay for the instructional materials as well as there is some money set aside in our L cap as well.
Is there typically a waiting list for these classes now? Seems like a amazing opportunity. Yeah.
So part of the process, do these students for the dual enrollment, do they have to also fill out a K through twelve verification form? Or is that separate from concurrent enrollment?
Concurrent enrollment, they have to fill out the form because we have an agreement with Palomar through the C cap. They don't have to fill out that separate form. However, they do have to become Palomar students and they have to go through the registration process for with Palomar. But we help them through that because it's part of the dual enrollment process.
So their counselor or admin designee would sign off on it. I I signed them, that's why. Thank you. Any other questions? What a wonderful opportunity for all our students, K through twelve. Yes. And I'll I'll be. And I'll admit, when I was actually in eighth grade, I did take a philosophy class through Palomar and a math class. So but it wasn't free back then. The next regular board meeting will take place on Thursday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six thirty P M. In the Media Center of the North County Regional Educational Center, two, five, five, Bico Avenue, San Marcos, California, nine, two, zero, six, nine. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.